Good? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Yes?
Now I'm good.
Where, now you're good.
Okay.
And Frank is good. Uh, welcome everyone to the March 21st edition of the Medfield Board of Selectmen. Uh, I want to let everyone know this meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. Several of them have tonight. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by going to the town website, selecting the agendas, find the Board of Selectmen meeting agendas, drop it down, and there is a Zoom link on the top of the agenda that will let you sign in. Uh, for those of you who are crestfallen that I am not on screen tonight, I was in such a rush to get out for this meeting, we, we actually started with some closed executive session meetings at five o'clock. I had everything set up on my laptop and my laptop is ready to go back sitting at my desk at home. So, some of you will be disappointed about that. Several of you, I'm sure, will be happy to be spared having to watch me for the hours that we have during the meeting. So, uh, that's, uh, that's about it for now. Uh, for the people who are here in the room, I think almost all of you are veterans, but perhaps not all. Um, it, what we'll ask you to do if you do want to speak in the room is, uh, if you're a primary speaker for anything, we'll ask you to use the podium because the feedback we've gotten from people who tune in on Medfield TV is that the audio channel is better with people who are on the podium. If you have brief discussions or something like that, uh, there should be a microphone. It is always close to Bill Masaro, at least at the start of the meeting. Uh, we'll ask you to use that when you speak into the microphone, it doesn't sound like it's doing anything and that's because the microphone isn't to amplify your voice in the room, it's to pick up the audio feed for Medfield TV. So, even though it seems like it's a totally useless piece of equipment, it's really important, please use it. Uh, and also if you're speaking here, we'd ask you to identify yourself and, uh, your, your address, uh, before you start. Uh, with that, would I like to, oh, uh, the other point about this, if you haven't figured out with all the references to Medfield TV, this is a recorded meeting. So you all, if you're, if you're in the meeting, you're, especially if, if you're physically here, you're subject to being picked up by our cameras and broadcast out across the town. Okay. Uh, to begin, we want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops, uh, protecting and serving the country across the world. Thank you. Okay. Uh, the very first appointment we have tonight is the Charles River and Naponton River Watershed Associations making a joint presentation.
Do you want to mention, make sure that Pete's okay and nobody thinks he's?
Oh, I will mention for those who don't, haven't figured it out, because I'm, in a way, I'm not here visually either. Uh, Pete Peterson was unable to make tonight's meeting, so there's just the two of us that are here. He basically had a business commitment that came up that, uh, has him doing honest work for the next several days, uh, and couldn't make it here in time for the meeting. So, so welcome, taken away, Charles River and Naponton River Watershed Association.
Thank you very much for having us. Uh, so, my name is Carrie Snyder. I'm with the Naponton River Watershed Association.
Hi, I'm Robert Kearns with the Charles River Watershed Association. And, and we're here to do a presentation, a brief one about climate change and some of the great work that's happening in Medfield and some of the recommendations that we have for the town and for everybody. Um, and we're just really excited to, to be here in person with you all.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Next slide. So here we just have a short agenda, first introductions, background on some of the climate change impacts we're seeing in Medfield, actions that town is taking and some next steps and recommendations. Next slide. Um, and first we just want to acknowledge that the lands of the Charles River and Naponton River Watersheds are on, are on, um, lands of the Napolts, of the Massachusetts, Nipmuck and Wampanoag tribes and their, um, the caretakers of the land and, and our work really carries upon their legacy, um, and we just want to recognize that. Next slide. Like I said, I'm Robert Kearns, climate planning specialist here with the Charles River Watershed Association, and I'm here with my colleague, Carrie.
Yep. Unfortunately Zeus couldn't make it, he'd get stuck in traffic, so you just have us tonight.
Um, next slide.
It seems like somebody like Zeus should just be a little tight. Chill out.
Great. Um, so, uh, so if you're not familiar with us, it's Charles River Watershed, we are a nonprofit, one of the oldest watershed organizations in the country, founded in 1965 by a group of residents who were really concerned about the state of the Charles and, you know, um, the water quality, you know, the river used to run different colors of the day depending on what was going on at some of the factories. And we really worked interdisciplinary with folks at the state level, here at the municipal levels, in federal agencies, uh, to help clean up the river. And there's still a lot of work to be done and we're really looking to be collaborative with, with folks on the municipal level. Um, and we have interdisciplinary staff with folks in science, advocacy, law, um, and policy. Next slide.
Uh, ditto over in the other watershed. So, we are also a member-supported, um, nonprofit, uh, conservation organization dedicated to cleaning up and protecting the Naponton River Watershed. Um, Medfield gets to be in both. Um, and we too work a lot with, uh, Medfield and the other watershed towns, um, on a variety of issues. Um, we do state advocacy, we do a lot of water quality testing, um, and, uh, generally, you know, we're, we'd like to support, continue supporting the town, um, in all of their efforts. Um, and the reason we're both here is because water doesn't respect municipal boundaries. Um, so if you see here, uh, in Medfield, the area in blue drains to the Naponton, um, watershed, and in green, it drains to the other side, to the Charles River. Um, and so, we do often work together, um, because our issues are very similar and, um, you know, it's just hydrology that, that keeps it separate. So we're very happy to be here, uh, together with you. So, we're here to talk about, um, you know, the, the impacts of climate change. What we're seeing already is significantly a change in precipitation patterns. And so what that means is we're seeing a greater percentage of our rain coming down as heavy downpours instead of those summer showers, um, that we've experienced. Um, and that's, that's a problem because as you see on the, the left, um, that's Norwood Center in June of 2020, they experienced a very short duration but heavy storm, um, that their stormwater systems just could not handle. Um, and we're going to be seeing a lot more of that, um, as we move forward. Next slide. And on the flip side, because precipitation patterns are changing so drastically, we're also going to see more frequent and more severe drought. Um, because all that rain's coming down in one event, it's not coming down throughout the season anymore. Um, so, so we've got heat waves, we have floods, uh, we've got extreme storms and, you know, we need to prepare our communities to be resilient to all of those impacts. Next slide, please. So, and I guess to start, um, the difference between climate change and weather is, climate is what we're looking at over the course of, say, 30 years, whereas weather is what we're seeing today. Um, you can click enter again once or twice, I think, to do some animations, there we go. Um, and we've, and it's already started, so we're not talking about something that's in the future. Um, we are seeing, we have already seen a 56% increase in the amount of rain that comes down, or in, in the amount of rain generally per year. Um, and this is going to continue to, to go on, um, and our infrastructure needs to be upgraded, needs to keep up, um, and we need to make sure our social structures are also keeping up with the needs of our communities.
And sort of just context of all this is, um, environmental justice where sort of all of these issues really intersect. And in Medfield, we don't have any, uh, state-destinated environmental justice neighborhoods, but in neighboring towns like Milis does and other towns in the community, but this also just populations of folks who are, um, low income, you know, individuals with disabilities, people, um, who are vulnerable, um, people who speak different languages, and that, those are some of the people that are going to be most impacted by a lot of these, um, storms and other climate impacts. So we just want to highlight that for folks.
Before you go on, this is what I actually have a question on. The, um, when you say that, why?
When you say why?
Yeah. When, when you say that you have, that these communities are going to be more impacted, what's the basis for saying that?
Yeah, I would say it's because they're, you know, less resources, less connected to a lot of the community and a lot of the, um, you know, social networks. So I think that's a part of it, also just, um, oftentimes folks are, um, living in areas that have more pollution or more impacts of flooding, just by, you know, circumstance.
So that piece, so, and this is a point of interest to me, even, even our current open space and recreation plan is talking about this as a need. Now, this map says Medfield doesn't really have, at least at the level that it shows up as any colors on a map, something to worry about. And my issue isn't philosophical against people who are living next to power plants have more pollution. In fact, I did a thesis for my master's degree and part of it had to do with the fact that some pollutants work okay with emission reduction credits because they're broadly spread pollutants, but some things that are particular, you can, you could put a big bubble and average it and it all looks like it works, but it's actually very distance dependent. So I get the concept. My, the reason I asked the question is in trying, it, it, it comes across sometimes like just this broad automatic brush. It's like your reason for why it's a problem is because people who are in some of these communities don't have a lot of money. Well, that's true for their food, that's true for the environment to, to some extent, especially if they're near somewhere. I'm looking for the practical implications of that in our town and I have a hard time finding it because I don't think people who might be less affluent or perhaps less command of English here, I don't think they're particularly harmed in any particular, you know, it could be my ignorance, but I don't think they're particularly harmed in any meaningful way here in Medfield because of that particular status relative to that. We may all get too much rain or we may all get basements to flood. So I, it's, I don't want it to be a rhetorical thing that just gets brushed over.
Yep. So part of it is, um, uh, folks can, you know, groups of folks are, are less mobile. So if you've got a natural disaster, uh, people in senior sen, you know, seniors might be less mobile, those with fewer means may be less mobile. They can't evacuate, they don't have anywhere to go, um, they can't afford to stay in a hotel, perhaps, you know, I'm not sure what the shelter situation is in, in this area, but that's certainly something that the towns are looking at to make sure that there are good shelters, um, around for those folks who can't leave. Um, the other thing is, um, these populations that are identified as environmental justice, um, populations are so, oftentimes because they've already been overburdened by development, for example, so, um, if you've got poor, you know, those of lower income living in a more developed area, they're going to experience more heat islands. So when it's hot out, it's actually going to be, it is going to be hotter in their neighborhoods than it will be on like a tree-lined street. Um, so there are very real implications of where they're living and how they can leave.
Let me, let me, I get that.
Yeah. And the other thing is communication, too.
And this is sincere question. I'm getting a little flip with you, I understand, but it's a sincere question. I'm sitting there saying, I don't think any of this, when we talk just about Medfield, I don't think, those issues are bigger city issues. I actually don't think that's an issue of a whole lot of consequence here in Medfield.
Yeah.
Just because, not because we're good, but just we're fortunate.
So your, your town identified, um, seniors, low income, um, and others, um, who might have medical conditions that are more susceptible to extreme heat, um, and new residents, so immigrants who are, so that, that's what, that's what Medfield identified. Um, so there are smaller communities of Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic language speakers who might be, uh, might be learning English as a second language. And so when emergency messages get, get sent around, they might not understand them, they might not be getting their news from the same sources. So, um, so there are a couple of different ways that might seem subtle, but could have real impacts. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So Milis, I'm surprised that that, that larger section in Milis is tagged. How, why is that?
Do you remember what it?
I can't remember the...
I think it's language.
Because it's the last color, right? I was trying to look at the color chart. I'm assuming it's the last one, minority.
It's language.
I think it's, I think it's English language isolation, so there, there's a...
That's a big section of Milis.
It is, and I can't see...
Well, the other thing...
Especially Buddy Sherburne-Hollison, like, okay, I'm like, okay, how does that work out?
And it's by census tract, so it may like, in reality, be smaller, but the census tract is that whole section of Milis.
Right. Okay.
So that, that could be where it's, it could be smaller within the census tract.
Okay.
No problem. Next slide. All right. And we just want to just thank Medfield for being really a leader on climate change and really doing a lot of work. You know, you all have a, a great climate action plan, you work, you have hazard mitigation plan, master plan, talking about climate mitigation, but also, um, you're looking at, like you mentioned, the open space plan, something that we've been engaged with and a lot of residents are. And all these plans and all the actions that the, that the town is making really, is making it a leader. And also, just want to highlight and thank you all for being members of our, uh, from Charles River, our Climate Compact Flood Model Project is something that you all have been involved in, and I know Carrie will talk a little bit later about the involvement that the town officially have been doing great work on their flood model in the Naponton as well. And also we have, uh, the Medfield State Hospital with D-CAM, and we're, we've been a great partner there and just want to thank you all for all the work there. So, next slide.
Incidentally, on the point about D-CAM and the hospital, the guy you should be thanking is that guy sitting right there, so.
Um, so, a lot of what we deal with is, is water issues, right? Um, and one of the, the biggest issues we deal with is storm water. And what storm water is, it's water that falls from the sky. When we, when we have an undeveloped state, you know, the water is going through its normal water cycle that you learned about in elementary school. It's soaking into the ground, it's evaporating, um, into the air, but when we develop that land, we're interfering with that process and we're laying down hard surfaces, we're blocking the water from soaking into the ground, uh, we're increasing evaporation and, um, that water has nowhere to go except to run off, uh, those hard surfaces. And we're talking roofs, you know, sidewalks, streets, driveways, and even lawns are pretty compacted compared to a natural state. Next slide, please. And when that storm water runs off, it's picking up everything that happens to be on the ground. So what we've done is we've developed storm water management systems. Um, you know, we've, we've essentially turned what is a resource into a nuisance. So we've developed these systems to move water away from people and places. But we do this in its most simplistic form, it's a grate attached to, uh, pipes under the ground and it carries the water directly to the nearest water body. There's no treatment and no real filtration of that water. So everything it's picking up, all that oil, fertilizers, dog waste, um, litter, um, all of that is going right into our water bodies. And it is the biggest source of pollution for both watersheds. So, uh, and, and our systems are really old. Um, you know, just by virtue of, the Northeast has been developed for a long time. And so they're undersized for the storms that we're seeing today. Uh, and that's exactly what happened in Norwood in June of 2020. Their stormwater system worked exactly as it was intended, it just got completely overwhelmed, the pipes filled and the water had nowhere to go. And it, it wiped out Norwood Hospital at the very beginning of a global pandemic. Um, so these, these things can have real consequences for, for people. Uh, next slide, please.
You may be wondering, so those hard surfaces that Carrie was talking about, like the blacktop, concrete pavement, you know, roofs, how, how those, they're called impervious surfaces or, you know, the hard surfaces, how, uh, Medfield stacks up to other communities? This graph shows, um, from the left-hand side to the right-hand side, the amount of those hard surfaces. And Medfield is, um, on the left-hand side, so it's more or less, obviously you have a lot of green space, open space, um, and a lot of the downstream communities like Boston, Cambridge, Somerville have a lot more, uh, of those hard surfaces. Just sort of showing where you are, um, in comparison and after, you know, 1% increase in impervious can really increase flood impact. So we do see, even with sort of the impacts you have in Medfield, there are some, obviously areas in town that do flood. in Medfield, there are some, obviously, areas in town that do flood. Next slide.
Is there, before you go on that one?
Yeah.
The, and the reason I'm sensitive to this is, we're in the middle of looking at redevelopment of the state hospital, which is, which is surrounded deliberately by open space. And as the developers are working, they're obviously, you know, they're wrestling with what percent is impervious, and they're trying to trade off parking spaces. The one thing that gets me, you know, got me thinking about this is that, you know, if we had an extra X percent of impervious surfaces at the state hospital property, surrounded by open space, it's just, that water is on that hard surface for a little bit longer before it gets to the ground and seeps into the ground. So, looking at a straight percentage, is there, is there a way of, versus, just looking at the percentage of the town that's impervious surface, is there also a way that you look at the sort of collective impervious surface in a particular place? Because we won't get, if we added an extra, you know, 10% of impervious surface at the state hospital, we're not going to get flooding. It's just going to flow a little longer before it gets to the field that we have wrapped around the entire campus. On the other hand, I can see how you could potentially, like, well, for that matter, Norwood, or the train overpass on Route 27 in Walpole, another place where you get these concentrations of impervious surfaces that maybe are configured a certain way, that all the water goes to one spot. And that's why you have the flood, because it didn't, is there, that wouldn't just be a straight percentage across the town, that would be something else.
Can I talk about flooding first? So flooding conversation, this is one that, from the watershed organizations perspective, we're trying to think of, like, even though there may be not direct impacts in Medfield, downstream, Boston, Cambridge, you know, Newtons, you know, Dedham's, even into the Ponce, some of the water actually goes into the Ponce, that's an aside. But if this, if this development's not being done with the things that the town is doing and working with the developer, like the green infrastructures, we're going to see more flooding downstream, even though it may not be directly in Medfield. Just the land use decisions upstream impact downstream communities. But it's something we're trying to communicate to folks. But also, Carrie will talk a little bit about the stormwater permitting.
I was just going to say, for, for specific redevelopment and development projects, Medfield is already regulating that pursuant to its stormwater permit. And so for any development that's an acre or more of impervious, you know, it needs to go, go through a review process. And they're going to calculate the, the amount of impervious surface and sort of talk to the developer and make sure that there's some sort of treatment for the stormwater on that property as, as they're doing it. Which is why redevelopment can be a great opportunity to reduce pollution, to reduce flooding, because there's so much that you can do with green infrastructure and gray infrastructure to hold on to that water.
And another thing, just to point out, I've been to the state hospital, I met Bill there and others, and our staff have been there. And a lot of the impervious surfaces there are just big, and they're not necessarily conducive for redevelopment. So there could be opportunities to lower the impervious surfaces, make it more conducive to parking. And I know other communities have unbundled parking, so people have to pay for parking for, because the developer is probably not going to want to spend a lot of money doing extra parking he doesn't need to build, too. MAPC has a thing, a study saying, showing how you go around a lot of these developments at night in the metro Boston area, a lot of them, a lot of the parking spaces are empty. So sometimes, we're actually overbuilding parking for, for what's needed.
So that's the thing I'm sensitive to, is I don't want the lessons learned from downtown Boston in an urban area to, it's not, it's that anytime I hear that, I wind up always saying, yeah, but this is relatively almost rural, but at least suburban town.
Yeah.
How much of the learnings, or how much of the issues that are existing in downtown Boston, which I totally understand, sometimes it feels like the solutions are being applied outside of that ring, and I wind up questioning whether the, at least the priorities of those solutions make any sense at all, given who we are and where we're at.
Yeah. I know the MAMP, they looked at regionally, not just downtown, but duly noted. Thank you.
More questions?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make a comment.
Anything but an address?
Yes, Bill Masaro, 36 Evergreen Way. I just wanted to make a comment about the pervious/impervious issues up at, at Medfield State Hospital. Last night in the presentation, Trinity presented their analysis of what's the existing impervious as opposed to what will result, as a result of their development. And they basically said that they essentially were affecting it by like half an acre of increase, which they hoped to cover with their stormwater management plan. But again, it wasn't available last night for us to look at. So supposedly, we're going to see it at the next one. Further to your question about why does one particular area matter when, given, you know, the whole scope, and based on the size of the project, Carrie mentioned it and everything else, you have to submit an environmental, developer has to submit an environmental impact report. And one of the key elements of the environmental impact report is the pervious, change in pervious/impervious surface. It was a big problem for DCAM, which probably contributed to why they took the Clark Building down, which gave them about another, you know, three acres or whatever of pervious. So Trinity has the advantage of that.
Yeah, I think what I'm getting at, Bill, is, but if, and we're not going to do this, but if suddenly, we, we had a significant project that we wanted to do on the North Field, we would be, we would be developing a currently 100% pervious surface to put in something, and we would still be dealing with this percentage issue.
Well, you will be with the state anyway, with, with, under the, you know, Environmental Protection Agencies and the Energy Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. You'll still have to do an environmental impact report, and you have to justify why it's all right.
See, what I'm getting at is, it's like, well, we're going to talk about what percent is impervious on a site. But if we take a completely brand-new site and need to put something else there, we're still going to be talking about what percent is impervious, even though we've created an impervious. And the reason I'm even thinking about that stuff is, at the same time that we're talking about what you're talking about, we're also talking about a state that has significant housing initiatives that are pushing us farther and faster in the direction of building housing and development than we would have ever done on our own. And I, for all the good reasons and all that, but I'm just trying to, that was my perspective.
And the issues are not mutually exclusive. We are definitely in a housing crisis, and we need more housing everywhere. But there is a way to build that housing and still maintain open space, still make sure that we're not increasing our risk through, you know, these climate impacts. So there, there are ways to do that.
And like I was saying, a lot of these redevelopments are putting the green infrastructure that wasn't there. They were just, you know, parking lots without any filtration, like Carrie was saying. So it's a good thing in that regard, too.
Yeah, redevelopment is definitely the way to go.
All right, next slide. So yeah, so we just have some recommendations, and these are not prescriptive, but we have some ideas. I think of it sort of like a combo plot, or pick and choose what, what type of things you want to work on. But number one, continue to work with regional partners. You guys are very active with our climate compacts and our, the flood model in both watersheds. Another one that other communities are doing that the town could look into, I don't know if they're currently up top of your head, Carrie, but stormwater utility is a way to pay for a lot of these green infrastructure upgrades. Additionally, updating land use regulations to...
Got to back up to two. I didn't have, I didn't really understand what a stormwater utility was.
Yeah.
You're going to cover it.
Yeah. And we, I think we have a slide, too, after, about it. But, so updating, like Carrie was saying, having land use decisions to be made to help support, you know, housing, but also protecting open space climate resiliency. Number four, CPA, that's something that's in your hazard mitigation plan, but also recently has been talked about for the open space plan. I know there's some interest in doing that. That's for funding source for affordable housing, open space, historic preservation, really...
Got to stop you again. So, and the reason of stopping is because this has come up several times in, in, in the town. And the argument is, well, it's free money, you know, it's free money for the state, 35% match, 30% match, it's great. When we looked at this a couple of years ago, and I, if you haven't figured it out by now, I'm probably more on the fiscally conservative side than some of the CPA advocates, it continually comes up as a, as a recommendation from the consultants, oh, CPA, free money. One of the things that we discovered, that 30% match, there's, I think, five categories of, that you could spend money on in CPA. One of the requirements of it, unless it's changed, and that's part of why I'm bringing it up, maybe it's changed, but one of the requirements at the time we looked at it, is you had to put, spend a minimum of 10% in each one of the categories. Our town, if you just looked at what we thought we needed, in terms of where we were putting money, we put money into two of the categories. So the basic idea of the CPA of putting a back-end tax on, on homeowners, we can get around that with an underwrite to offset that, if it's just a matter of changing the tax structure. We could basically put the back-end tax on, pass an override, so the net tax impact on the taxpayer is the same, we just reclassified it. So we could get there. But the real argument was, three of the categories weren't categories that we were planning, we had any meaningful plans to spend money on. So you get the 30% state match, but it's the 30% state match that's being specified to fund categories of, of expenses that weren't actually on our priority list. And so it was an interesting, had it been just, look, we're just giving you the money and spend it on the things that you think you need, I think, certainly speaking, as one person who was involved in that discussion at the time, this goes back several years, I would have been far more intrigued by the state giving us money that they really were going to let us do what we wanted with, rather than the state giving us money and then turning around and telling us how to spend it, in terms of the categories. It may have changed.
I am going to have to look into that, because I did not think that they required you to spend it in every category, but that you could only spend it in one of the categories. So I will, I will look at that and get...
You have to either spend or set aside each year for the 10%. There's actually three categories total, because it's open space and recreation.
Maybe they've dropped a number of categories.
But at any rate, you have, 10% has to go into three reserved, the COBs, and then 70% is, can be spent, you all still have to be spent on those use, cannot go outside the statutory.
The other point I just want to make, just a point of clarification, is that it, it's not the state telling you, it's, you have a committee set up by, you know, members of the town that would drive it, have a planning process.
That part's the state specify. No, but if it's three, I think, I'm almost positive it was five, when we looked at it, maybe 10 years ago. It wasn't just three. It's always been three.
Open space and recreation is like, it's one, but it looks like two. And then there's historic resources and community housing.
Okay, okay. Then maybe I had an impression of it being a bit more, a bit less attractive than maybe it really is. Okay.
And in the past couple of years, the advocates like ourselves, the watershed organizations, but also those other advocates, because it goes historic, open space, housing, have gone back to legislature and actually increased the funding for the match. So there's, there's been an increase probably since it. And we're thinking 2024 could be a good year with, with voter turnout to look into it.
Well, good. I learned something tonight. That's good.
Yep, okay. Next slide.
You skipped the robust tree line.
We're going to get to that.
Oh, sorry.
This is more the list of things we're meant to talk about. So, so we do want to thank you and want to encourage you to continue your involvement with both the Charles River Climate Compact and the nascent Napaunset River Watershed Climate Collaborative. We're working on that right now through an MVP grant, and Medfield is a strong partner on that. We're sort of building off of the partnership that Medfield has been involved in, through the Napaunset Stormwater Partnership for many years now, because these climate adaptation projects are expensive for individual communities to take on themselves. So, working regionally, we're really hoping that we can sort of get economy of scale and get some, some cost decreases for everybody.
Next slide.
So, stormwater financing. So, as you know, your stormwater management is governed by the MS4 permit, which is jointly administered by the EPA and DEP. A new permit is coming out this year. It won't be effective this year, but the draft should be out by the end of the summer. We do expect that it will continue on the trend that it's been and be more prescriptive, require, you know, more action on the parts of the permities. And with those requirements comes more cost. Climate change is also adding cost, because all of these systems need to be upgraded at some point. Colloverts need to be enlarged in, in most places. And you need to maintain everything. And so what we're seeing, and what we're encouraging towns to do, is to really look at dedicated funding. 24 communities in Massachusetts have adopted a stormwater utility. It is essentially making sure that we're paying for this third and invisible water utility. We're paying for sewer, we're paying for drinking water. We don't, we don't pay for stormwater outside of the budget process, the operational budget for each year. And, you know, stormwater management isn't, isn't a sexy topic at town meeting. So it doesn't often get the priority that it needs, particularly now. With Medfield being in both the Napaunset and the Charles, Medfield is also dealing with the added cost of its phosphorus control plan. And again, those costs are just going to increase. And so, so we're encouraging towns to take a look at, at dedicated funding, whether it's through utility or some other mechanism. But it is a way to sort of spread the cost based on impervious surface on each property, so that people are paying their fair share. Most towns have a differential rate for residential versus non-residential. Dedham is implementing, they're the newest one in our watershed to implement one. It'll be going into effect July 1st. They're using their existing enterprise fund, their sewer enterprise fund, so they're not creating a new one, they're just going to fold it in. So we just encourage you to, to look at that financing, look at, look at how you're funding this moving on into the future, because it is, it is getting costly.
So if I were to react?
Please?
I think what you just said is that we have a different way for you to raise taxes without raising taxes.
It's a service, you know, so we look at it as a utility.
Well, that's fine, too, but the idea that it's expensive to pay for it through taxes, but it's not expensive to pay through it through a service cost, where does the tax side of this get dropped down when that cost gets sent over here? Or are you really saying, well, no, it's what it is, is that the public doesn't want to pay taxes to support this, so this is a different scheme to extract money from people to pay for? I'm being, I'm being cynical here, but you understand why.
I, I completely understand. But we do look at it as another utility, that, you know, we're paying for two utilities, we're not paying for the third water utility. So, and this, this is, if it's, if it's stormwater, if it's a stormwater utility, it's actually based on your property. So it's not, it's not everybody's paying the same, it's how much impervious surface do you have? Are you a big warehouse with a huge parking lot and lots of impervious? You'd be paying more.
So is the practical, oh, I mean, when we talk property, we're talking property taxes, and that's already a differential tax. Would the mechanism for that, I guess this is the question, how does that work? Is it, if I have X impervious surface, does that become a factor in the assessment of my property and rolled into a property tax? Does the payment that I make every year vary with the amount of precipitation that comes in?
It's a service fee. Franklin's in the process of implementing it.
And it's just, it's just every year it would be the same, or it'd be accelerated by some amount of...
Based on the number of units, they determine a unit for impervious service and it's X number of dollars per unit that you have. Most residential houses are relatively small, will be one or two units perhaps. And so you multiply, and it's a relatively insignificant amount on your property tax. But it's a separate...
It's a separate...
But it's not, it's not a tax, it's a utility, it's a fee, it's a user fee.
So oftentimes, it's showing up on your, on your water bill, or your sewer bill, if they're, if they're separate.
Would they, they would, taxpayers would then get to approve the rates in the same way they would for water and sewer bills? They have to?
Yes. So the...
Perhaps go through town meeting, the legislative board, in Franklin.
But the, the individual residence control mechanism is to either approve or not approve the, usually it's the budget for water and sewer. Is it, I'm curious, is it, does it have its own enterprise fund? Is it...
So it can. In, in most towns, it does have its own. Like I said, Dedham is just implementing their new one, and they're using their existing sewer enterprise fund.
Funds have to be segregated.
Yeah, but they are segregated, yes.
Okay.
So, but town meeting's going to have to appropriate that money.
Learned two things today. All right.
All right, next slide. So you may be wondering, I'm going to be quick here. So what, what we're looking at for the nature-based solutions, we have, you know, sort of restoration on the left, that was up in Bellingham where they did some dam removal. We had some pictures from Franklin from green infrastructure. And you have, in Medfield, you have one of the, you know, original nature-based solutions, the Natural Valley Storage Area, which a lot of people downstream don't even, never heard of it, but, you know, the natural wetlands that are holding flood... heard of it, but, you know, the natural wetlands that are holding flood for storage purposes during flooding, and it's a great project. And sort of that, sort of bringing nature back in the built environment or protecting it where we can is, is what we're really looking for when we're thinking about these nature based solutions to climate change. Next slide. So yeah, just hitting back on Community Preservation Act. In comparison, so it's no, no more than 3% property tax, but you can go as low as point, .5% up. I know a lot of communities don't do 3%, just because it's very, it's high. Also, in the, in the two watersheds, 79% of both of them, communities have it. So recently, NADIC just passed it, I think last year. And like we said, that the presidential election's a good year because of the great voter turnout, if, if folks are interested in it. And it's really a great program to help hit a lot of the things that residents are interested in. Next slide. And that's it, if you have here for any questions.
I have one for you that Billy has already heard this feedback on our climate action plan. Are, are you seeing anything being done in either watershed, and it may not be that you're doing it because it might not exactly map, around carbon sequestration?
So, within, within our scope, we are doing more work with adaptation versus sequestration and emissions reductions, simply because of the resources that we have. So I, I would have to look into that and get back.
The reason I ask is because the stated goal for 2050 is to get to net zero carbon, or in our case at least, purchase offsets. And I'm sitting there looking at a town that has the amount of open space that we have, and the fact that those offsets are included in that ultimate 2050 goal tells me, people are saying, and we don't think we're actually going to be able to get there. But towns like ours, in fact, cities like Seattle are putting in forests to generate the offset credits, to turn this thing in. So if we're going to talk about really wanting to do this, we shouldn't be planning to get to offsets that we have to buy in 2050. We should be having plans for how we're going to grow forests to generate the credits that we can sell in 2050. But it takes 30, 50 years to grow forests, so you can't be thinking about it in 2050, you got to be thinking about it in 2025, or, you know, pretty quickly about where you might be able to do that. It seems to me, we have a town that should be able to do that, and you've already heard this, Billy, so I'm not, I'm not blindsiding you here, but we're not doing that. We're sitting there saying, no, we're just defining that out of our plan. And it's like, well, is anybody else putting it in their plan? Seattle's doing it, and that's a city. So, okay. Well, I.
You're guys are river guys.
Well, the other thing, just, just came to the top of my head, that I, I've not personally been involved in as much, but there's, like, I know the state has like a green or blue carbon calculator for like, if you do a wetlands restoration, or sort of that, to sort of look at credits for there. And I know a lot of like, these resiliency projects have some coal benefits, planting trees and stuff. I don't know, I know for us, we don't have like a mechanism to calculate that, but I know that the state has some, this is, I, I don't know if it's just for salt moshes or if it includes inland wetlands, but there's, there's tools. And I saw another tool that I had to do with like dams and dam removal. There's, I don't think there's many big dams in Medfield, so it probably wouldn't be relevant, but.
Oh, yeah, there are.
Well, I mean, not, not as big as like, you know, some of the bigger ones, but they, like up in Franklin, but they can calculate how much methane is coming from the, you know, the plant matter in the bottom, like, you know, decomposing, turning the gas, so.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, you, you have on here, adopt a robust tree bylaw. What's an example of a robust tree bylaw?
So yeah, so every, so tree bylaws, a good example, we have them on our website. One is Somerville, which obviously is a more urban town, community, but I know also, I'm blanking on another one, but that's sort of the gold platinum standard. But, you know, if you're interested in that, you can work it, you know, depending on the community, because I know there's a lot more trees here.
But what is it, define it. What is it actually?
You say robust, that's why I'm curious as to what.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Like, that podium is not robust.
Yeah, so it, I think it's, it's regulating, big picture, regulating trees on public and private property. So like having a system to have credits or payments for, for lots of trees on private property, but I know some communities don't even have any tree code at all, but it's sort of like, depending on what level the community's interested in, because every community's different. We're not saying you have to be, do what exactly, you know, I guess the Cadillac, which would be Somerville's, but the other one's Concord.
So you buy a home, and you buy a home and there's 18 pine trees on it, and pine trees, one, you can love them or you can hate them, but if you don't want them, because you just spent a million two on your property, are you saying that there would be bylaws that say you can't cut those trees down on your property? Is that what, is that, is that what I'm, when I see that, is that what I'm thinking? Or am I going to an extreme? That we wouldn't be telling private people what they could do on their land, but looking more towards what the town would be trying to preserve in their open space?
It, so each tree, each tree bylaw would be different, depending on the town and depending on what the interest in the town is and what the goals of it are. Some towns, some communities, like Somerville, they have a system where if you were to cut down a tree on private property, you would have to pay a fee into the town to plant it somewhere else, or, I know some of the towns work to have, you know, if it's in a wetland area, to cut, you cut down one, replace two to one or different numbers. But, so yeah, so it's, it's a regulation, either you, you pay into it, into a fee, or say you can't do it. But there's, there's different options, but, you know.
Okay.
But you don't, say if that's not the interest of the town, you don't have to write it that way. So it just depends.
Probably a weak tree bylaw, get rid of the crap trees and keep the good ones.
That was good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming by.
Appreciate it.
Our thanks to Zeus for trying to make it through the traffic.
Yeah, he did try, yeah. Yeah, Watertown, yep, downstream.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Did I, I forgot to ask, were there any questions in the audience? Politicians. You guys, most of you guys know, you just raised your hand if you want to talk, but.
Took them along the way.
All right. Question, or item number two by appointments, requests from Chris McQ Potts on behalf of the Medfield History Day Weekend Committee to hold Medfield History Weekend, April 28th to the 30th, and request to place town lawn signs at participating town-owned properties, advertising the event at the library, Dwight Derby House, Kingsbury Grist Mill, and Medfield State Hospital. Take it away, Chris.
Correct. Thank you. So, thanks for having this on the agenda tonight, and I should have been wearing one of my straw hats that I have to fit in with the whole theme. So just to recap from the last time I was here, the weekend that we have slated is April 28th to April 30th, so it's Friday to Sunday. We're still working on some Friday plans, so I'm going to focus mostly on the Saturday and Sunday. So just as a quick overview, we have 14 entities that are involved with putting together the whole weekend, either directly participating, actively participating, or supporting it in some way. We have seven unique activities, five open sites, every single one of our historic groups is involved in this. And they've been, had a seat at the table with coming up with ideas and helping to plan things for their own sites. We have the library scavenger hunt, we have all, like I said, all the open sites, so Dwight Derby House, the Grist Mill, Peak House Heritage Center, Lowell Mason House, let's see, did I miss anybody? I think that's about it.
Historical Society.
Historical Society, that's right, because that's been closed for a while, so that'll be a real treat to have that open. And Richard DeSorge is coming back, he's going to do the walking tour. He's also going to do a gathering over at the Dwight Derby House where he'll talk a little bit about some town history, he's going to bring his books. He's also doing a taping this Friday at Medfield TV, he's going to do an, like an in-studio recording of his King Philip War talk. We don't really have a very good recording of that, so that's going to be a very professional recording of that, which will be great. Time Clock, the steeple tour, Hannah Adams' display at the library, John Thompson's doing the Medfield State Hospital tour, and then we have the wonderful trolley, Old Town Trolley coming back. So that's sort of all of the highlights of the events. Just one other quick note is that we talked a lot about the, about the indigenous history in Medfield, and as a group, we just felt like there's so much there that we didn't want to, we didn't want to put a little bit here and there, you know, just to be able to say that we did indigenous, there is going to be some worked into it, but we're looking at the fall as doing something that's a much more concentrated event, that we can really focus in on it. And one of the aspects we're looking at is the archaeological history that goes back 8,000 years and the things that we found in the town, and bringing in somebody from Mass Historical Commission and really talking about the origins of the town. So I just wanted to make sure to, to mention that, because that was not something that we, was an oversight, we really talked about it a lot. Let's see what else. And then, and just in terms of the request from, from the last meeting, when I was here, we've been completely in touch with the police chief to make the Kings, the only area that, you know, she was a little bit concerned about was the Grist Mill, the Kingsbury Grist Mill. So we've actually put in timed tickets for that, it's free, but we'll be able to control access for that, so we don't have to worry too much about parking and pedestrian access. We'll take care of the, you know, trash recycling, I have to work with Mo on that, just to see what we need to do. We're signed off, basically nothing with border health that we have to worry about. Trying to think, what else? Council on Aging has been involved with this, too?
No food?
No, nope. I mean, we have a cake, but border health said it was no big deal to have the cake.
No food concessions?
No, not at all. Nope.
Is Cam doing anything this weekend as well? So is?
It's going to be, there's a lot going on that weekend.
Because I think this was the Ferry House weekend last year.
It's the Ferry House weekend, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, the nice thing is, is that there's, there doesn't seem to be one thing that's going to consume everyone's time from nine o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the afternoon. So people can go do one thing, go do another thing, yeah. And I have, Memo has been wonderful because they're basically taking care of the contracting with the trolley. Russ is here, if you have any questions about the trolley tour. Joe Opiella is actually doing the, doing the narration this time around for the tour with Jerry Potts. And so if you have questions about that.
There was still four on Saturday?
The trolley is on Sunday. And it goes on, and four on Saturday, yeah.
It ends at four on Saturday. The reason I ask is.
It ends at, it's two, four o'clock. It'll end at five.
Okay. The reason I ask is because last year, I'm still seared from the fact that only our most newly elected member of the Board of Selectmen showed up for the opening day parade.
Oh geez, don't tell me the same weekend.
And our agenda tonight, we also have opening day parade from Assembly at 3:45. Parade starts at four. I, well, I think that would just add to the festivities. But that's one more consideration in terms of traffic flow.
Is that Saturday or Sunday?
That's Saturday, the 29th.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's on 29th.
Yeah.
And it's, it's Dale Street to Mediacombe, so it's, but by way, as I recall, Main Street.
It's a street shot.
Right, trolley is on Sunday.
Okay.
So it won't be too much of an overlap.
So it would be part of Richard's walking tour, like, and here are your fine young softball players?
Richard's, Richard's will end at 1:30.
Oh, okay, just had nine to four, so I wasn't sure, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, we have varying times depending upon what it is, but, but the, but the, the main sites are going to be pretty much open until, until four.
Maybe, maybe we could find some costumes from the 19th century.
So, yeah.
All right.
And so the only other additional sort of sign request that I put in, it just, as we were working through the budget, we are getting $3,500 from the Medfield Cultural Council to fund this, so, which is fantastic. So as working through the budget, it made sense, geez, wouldn't it be great to have just a lawn sign at each of the sites that says, "Participating in Medfield History Weekend", and I realized I didn't think about that with the last sign request, and wanted to see for any of the town sites if that was okay to do that.
So I thought, so it's funny, because I was looking at this list and said, this isn't the, this isn't the usual places.
Right.
But I think it's by intent, you'd basically have them where the sites are.
Exactly.
So that would make sense, I don't think there's any problem with us approving signs at the locations for this event, given, given we have specified, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I'm not going to interject myself.
Okay, okay. So I think you're good to go, Chris.
I mean, it's kind of, it's an extension of the site's own signs, basically, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I do have, should I, should I ask my question? No, I have a question for.
Last you, identify yourself, give us the address.
So?
You're good.
Hello, hi, I'm Joe Opiella, 22 Lee Road, I'm a member of the Historical Commission and the Historical Society, I'm coordinating the trolley tour. So in planning the route, I wanted to go on Dale Street behind the cemetery. And there's a sign there, right at the entrance to the cemetery, that says, "Weight limit, 7,000 pounds." It's a weather beaten sign, it looks like it's been there for decades. Not far from that sign, on both sides, it says, "School bus, watch out for school buses." The trolley weighs 26,000 pounds. So I called Mo Galley and asked about this, can I take the trolley on that street for, you know, two minutes, four times on Sunday? And he said, "Oh, the select board has to approve that."
You are, you are technically the road commissioners and would need to.
Learn something every day.
Joe, hold it, hold on.
So there's no, no bridges on that road, there's no, you know, it's a wide, it's a wide enough road, I don't know why that sign is there, as I said, it's weather beaten, I don't, you, it's in the middle of the road, so if you turned onto that road from 27 or Bridge Street, you'd be on the road by the time you saw the sign.
So the fun thing about being on the Board of Selectmen, from my perspective, is you get asked questions about things that you have absolutely nothing, know nothing about. And the one that always sticks in my mind was, three years ago, when I was tasked as chair to have to perambulate the town, which I thoroughly enjoyed, and it's, it's something that only a very few people in the history of Medfield have officially been able to do, which is just to check to make sure that Walpole hasn't taken any of our property or anything with it, make sure the boundaries are where they're supposed to be. So the short answer is, I have no, just like you, I have no clue why that sign was put up, except to assume.
I spec, go ahead.
Well, if you, if you have an answer.
I speculate it's to keep the Tresca Brothers trucks off that road, and to use that as a shortcut from 27.
So that means we have to go talk to.
Over to 1:15.
Find out what the truth is.
Again, it's, I have a picture of the sign, it's weather beaten as can be, I mean, it's in, it's not located strategically if you were going to, if you were an overweight vehicle using that road.
So, well, I did talk to Mo, and he did let me know on Friday that he had had a conversation with you. Mo said he did not think it was going to be an issue for a small amount of time, but the decision had to be made at the Board of Selectmen. Because it's not on the agenda tonight, I would recommend that if you are, if you are okay with it, you can at least keep planning the tour, and we can put it on the agenda for an official vote next week. Unfortunately, Mo could not be here tonight.
Might be the week after next, because I don't.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, April 4th.
Yes.
April 4th.
I mean, I could reroute if I have to, but it'd be not ideal.
Let this play out first.
So my, my thought is.
Identify yourself.
Russ Hallis, 11 Ledge Tree Road. My thought, sitting here, is if the sign is at the mouth of the entrance into the cemetery, I'm suggesting that maybe the sign is relative to the cemetery driveways as opposed to the road.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So I think that that's what it is, and it may be now an easy decision.
We will take that under advisement. It's possible it's only a sign that limits the size of the hearse that can come into the cemetery. Not Tresca Brothers, as we suspected. So at this point, I agree, I think makes sense to you.
Yeah, we'll just put it on the agenda.
This is good to go, and it'll be on the agenda in two weeks, and we'll have some opportunity to.
If there were a weight restriction in place for that road, it would be a record somewhere.
And it would, and it would also be at the beginning of the road, when you enter the road.
Both ways.
In both directions, if it was for the road. So it doesn't make any sense that that sign pertains to the street.
Only one side of the road that has the flaw.
That's right, at the mouth of the driveway.
That area was reconstructed, and it might have been put in at that point to prevent shortcuts. They might have just stuck the signs up with a weight restriction without going through the process of doing it properly. I'm totally speculating, but --
When you say there should be a record of it, is there a place that records like that can be found?
One would expect a file somewhere in the Select Board's office, but I wouldn't be optimistic.
No.
Yeah.
Well, we'll play for two weeks of time.
I think you would still make an exception.
Yeah, I think.
We'll just put it on the agenda formally at the next --
In Vegas, this is looking good.
Yeah.
Yeah. In Vegas, this is looking good.
Okay.
Is that it?
Anything else?
Did you cast a vote?
No, well, we can't until we --
On the signage?
Oh, the signage.
Yeah, we did, yeah. You did? Do I need to put that --
Yeah, let's do it real.
Sure.
I motioned a request from Chris Potts, Chris McQupot, excuse me, on behalf of the Medfield History Day Weekend Committee to hold Medfield History Weekend, April 28th to 30th, a request to place town lawn signs at participating town-owned properties, advertising the event at Library, Dwight Derby House, Kingsbury Gris Mill, and Medfield State Hospital.
Second, all those in favor?
Thanks.
I oppose. Motion carries.
I forgot that was my responsibility tonight.
Yeah. And I just, I also, yeah, it is. I really do want to give a huge shout out to, like, Pam at the library, Sarah at COA, Medfield TV, Memo, Histor -- I mean, everybody's been so great, and it's been a lot of fun working on this, so I think it's gonna be a fun weekend.
Should be good, yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Next, we have a discussion with the Medfield Energy Committee. Hilly.
Thank you to the Board for inviting the Energy Committee tonight here to discuss our concerns about the Medfield State Hospital development. The Energy Committee has been fully supportive and is fully supportive of the Trinity efforts to bring the project to fruition, and the Energy Committee has worked for four years to provide the town with advice and guidance on this project. Our goal is the same as the one noted by Bethany Moody from Icon Architecture, who represents Trinity, who said at the Planning Board meeting on the 6th of March, "Our goal is to make a project successful and something the town can be proud of for the next 100 years." We're fully in agreement with that, and that's what we're working towards. An important component of Trinity is their commitment to sustainability, as was stated in their project proposal.
Hilly, I'm gonna stop you right here.
Can I just finish this one sentence?
I don't think so, because I think you're completely off the topic.
I just have one sentence.
One sentence.
So their commitment to sustainability is stated in their proposal and the promise to engage New Ecology as a sustainability consultant.
That's it?
Well, I have one more, can I?
You're going in the wrong direction.
Yeah. Trinity, however, has not lived up to their commitments, and we believe this risks the success and affordability of this project for the future residents.
So you continue to go in the wrong direction. I have a starting question for you. Did you observe or did you watch the video of Jim's subcommittee meeting?
Yes, I did.
From last week? Did you find anything at all wrong with that video?
What I saw was a strategy meeting to see how best to support the town and Trinity in making this project a success.
So I think the answer to my question is, no, you did not.
Not really, no.
Okay, then we've totally, you've totally missed the boat. I am extremely concerned about the direction that either the entire Energy Committee or this subcommittee is taking. And I want to make very clear what my issues are. I'll be happy to hear your responses as a co-chair about whatever reactions you have to these things, but I want to make very clear my concerns about what I saw in that video and my continuing concerns about how this process with Trinity is working out. My main concern, when I looked at that video, is the legal exposure that the discussion that that subcommittee had and the actions that that subcommittee took that exposed this town to potential legal liability should Trinity conclude that this town is not acting in good faith. We have a contract that we signed with Trinity when we accepted a proposal for Trinity in response to an RFP that we submitted. We said what we were looking for. Trinity came in, in my opinion, with a more responsive proposal than I ever expected any developer would come in with, and we signed a contract with them. In that video, I heard people, despite the fact that this Board of Selectmen has provided explicit guidelines, that communications with Trinity will go through Sarah Reposa. Specific comments about members of that subcommittee directly talking with New Ecology, Trinity subcontractor.
They're not.
They're not Trinity subcontractor. They have not signed a contract with New Ecology, and that's the point.
I have been at meetings where Trinity says they're using New Ecology.
They have not signed a contract with New Ecology. They have not spoken with New Ecology since the RFP.
Can I, yeah, can I just clarify? My understanding is that in the proposal, there, they were proposing to use New Ecology as their sustainability contractor.
It is not their, our job to tell them what they had. They proposed it that way. They have a contract. Their job is to carry that out. Now, if you're saying they're not using New Ecology at all, I'll pull my horns in on that one. What I've heard them say is they are using New Ecology. They're just not using New Ecology the way that you would like to direct them to use it.
They're not using New Ecology in the way --
Hey, Jim, Jim, this is a conversation I've asked Hilly to come and have. I basically am not interested because you're the Chair of that subcommittee. You're the one I'm furious with. You're the one who, as far as I can tell, has disregarded the guidance that you said you understood and have gone around trying to get into, involved in influencing Trinity's project in a completely inappropriate way. And the issue I have to start with is the concern that that exposes this town to should Trinity decide that we have signed a contract and are not acting in good faith. The second thing that I heard in that meeting was that not only did you contact New Ecology, you contacted a former senior executive at Trinity with a goal of trying to influence what Trinity does on this project.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. That is not the truth, not what I heard today in that recording, and I really object to that misrepresentation.
So you did not hear that statement in the recording?
I heard that, 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 yes.
You didn't even hear the name of the person in the recording?
No, I do, I did hear that the conversation took place, but this was not to reach out to the former executive.
What, say again?
This meeting was not organized to meet this person because he is a former executive of Trinity. When that meeting was convened, there was no knowledge that he was former executive of Trinity. And I think that's what I heard in that recording.
At what point did you learn that this person that you talked to, that you had no idea had any connection with Trinity, was actually an executive with Trinity?
He was introduced to me by the folks at New Ecology because in doing my due diligence in submitting the comments I had about the plans that I feel are not living up to Trinity's commitments to be sustainable, before I started raising that, I wanted to make sure of my facts. So, because I know the folks at New Ecology from the work we did with them during the RFP, I reached out and said, you know, "Am I reading this right? Can you take a look at this?" They said, "The guy you need to talk to is Hank Keating, who is Board President of Passive House, Massachusetts." So I said, "Great."
Okay.
Talked to Hank, and yes, he mentioned that he was a former executive of Trinity.
And at that point, what did you do?
I described more about our concerns about the project.
Why?
Because I was trying to get, make sure that before I submitted my comments, which I knew would be controversial, I wanted to make sure my facts were straight. I was doing my due diligence to make sure before I raised a big issue that I was, had facts behind me and that I had the building science behind me.
And you had no idea that he was going to go back to Trinity and talk to his former colleagues?
He mentioned that he might.
And what did you say when he mentioned that?
That's his decision.
Okay, that's my problem. You have no business getting involved with Trinity, Trinity's project, in that way, outside of the loop that we have made a clear guidance around how we will communicate with Trinity. You do not have a role in telling Trinity how they have to do their job. If we have the correct relationship, there is a role that the Energy Committee can play to offer ideas, their own analysis, to Trinity to take a look at and to consider, not to go around behind people's backs, not to try to go above the Trinity project managers, to talk to top-level people at Trinity to try to promote your views. My concern is when we start doing that, we are exposing this town to legal liability. And aside from that, has the Energy Committee ever looked at what the impact would be if Trinity were to just decide that we are not operating in good faith and that they just need to withdraw from this project? Have you ever considered what that picture looks like if Trinity withdraws from this project, where this town winds up with that state hospital?
That has never been our intent.
Start with the 25th -- oh, I'm sure it wasn't your intent, but you haven't been listening. We basically are not in a role, the Energy Committee is not in a role, to sit there and tell Trinity and inject itself into the Trinity effort to get Trinity to do things that you want them to do.
I'm trying to get them to do the things that they committed to in the RFP.
I know that, exactly. You need to stop trying to get them to do anything. You need to, if you have good ideas, if you have good ideas, rather than trashing their consultants, rather than saying, "That's wrong, this is a better thing." Here's another question for you to answer.
Sorry, sorry, I really have to object to that wording, both.
Well, you brought two people -- no, trashing, telling a company that they're not competent in a particular area, that would be kind of trashing.
Not competent, experienced.
I did not say that.
Just, just hold.
I qualify that because architects are not expected to be building science experts.
And you are not expected to judge what Trinity is doing. I want to be very clear. Do you understand you are not to be involved in that way in trying to force Trinity to do things or to measure up to your standards? If you have, Jim, this is why I didn't want you here. I'm not interested in negotiating with you. I'm talking to the co-chair of the Energy Committee.
And I'm the other co-chair.
Because my concerns are where this Energy Committee is going. The article that just got posted in the patch, on what basis? Was that an approved article? Did the Energy Committee approve that article?
That was --
I don't think so.
No, you just did it on your own. You just unilaterally decided you would do it, you would post it. You don't even have respect for your own committee. You have no authority as a subcommittee to do something like that.
So then how do we get our concerns heard? Because so far, for four years, our concerns have been pushed to the side, ignored. Last night, we read from the Planning Board, "Oh, that's not our purview, so please don't talk about that in this meeting."
Which is correct. It's not their purview.
So if you've read the comments I submitted, you'll see that I've laid out a very fact-based arguments about where they're falling short and where if --
I'm telling you, you have no role in forcing your opinions to be the answer on this project. If you have --
I'm trying to get our opinions heard and considered seriously.
Jim, I'm gonna ask you to sit down. I want to have a conversation. We're not getting anywhere here. Hilly, my first issue is that one, legal. My second issue is the practical impact on this town if this project fails. And what we've tried, what I'm trying to make very, very clear is the Energy Committee has a role, has a charter to advise us, the Board that appointed you, to offer advice. When I sat down at lunch with Jim and Stephen Brown, my advice to the two of them when they said they had some great ideas was to write those great ideas down, put the business case in place, offer it to Trinity, and say, "We think there's some things you might want to know about that we have some expertise. We think you can make this more financially attractive to you," and let Trinity decide when and if they wanted to call you in. That's good help. That is useful when, as a town, we're doing those kinds of things to actually offer advice and good ideas to Trinity. That's wonderful. That's what we should be doing, and if we're doing a good job of it, then Trinity is likely to take some of those things on and you push the needle farther along. The article that's just come out, contrary to what was actually stated in the meeting, that I watched the videotape, which said, it was, you said, Jim, it wasn't possible, it wasn't feasible to achieve net zero on the state hospital. And yet the article claims that it is. And so that's --
I can't speak to that article, I'm sorry, but --
Okay, well, that's fine. You're getting this full blast, because this is a project that people have been working on for over a decade. Hundreds of people have been working on this for over a decade for tens of thousands of hours. And what I'm seeing happening right now is interference that jeopardizes the possibility, or adds a risk at least, to the possibility that we will be able to carry this project out successfully, because people have a specific agenda and they are pushing that agenda with blinders on about all the broader things that this town is gonna get, can potentially get from this project if we can continue to work collaboratively with Trinity to get the job done. Let me go to my second issue.
Can I just respond to that? Because it's a lot, a lot already.
Yes, okay, all right.
So I agree, we would love to work collaboratively with Trinity, and what our concern is that some of the things that they are proposing to do will really cause them issues five or 10 years down the road. And I don't know if you've read the specs that they're proposing, you know, have proposed in the last Planning Board meeting and the one in the week before. It is really hard for them to make the energy needs match up with what they're planning to do. And, for example, I don't know if you looked at the wall crosscuts that they're proposing. We calculate that the R-value of those walls that they're proposing is somewhere around four. At the same time, they are planning to use air source heat pump, which we think will not be sufficient for this. And, you know, at the same time, they're having a certain percentage of affordable housing with a suggested maximum of 30% of the affordable income going towards rent and utilities. I really don't know how they are going to plan to do that with, you know, the low building efficiency on, you know, the plan just didn't add, doesn't add up. And we're concerned that, you know, there's gonna be issues for the residents, issues for, you know, some retrofits coming, you know, more costs, and we --
So what is your, what is the role of the Energy Committee with regard to that? You're concerned that Trinity's plan isn't gonna work as well as you think it might, that's fine, but who is it that's actually responsible for making the decisions on how Trinity is going to do that?
I would hope that they get consultants on that who can do that.
Well, whatever you, no, no, let me finish, let me finish. I'll come in a minute.
I mean --
The question is, who is it that actually gets to make those decisions?
I guess it's Trinity. I'm not entirely sure, yeah.
Okay, so we're at a good starting point. Now, the next question I have is, so if you or the Energy Committee, because it may not be you personally, if you feel that Trinity has made decisions that are not even in Trinity's interest, how might the Energy Committee best go about letting Trinity know that, sharing that knowledge, and making a case that would be likely to have Trinity listen? And if, in fact, they listen and you really have given them something worthwhile, probably give you more credibility and more time than I think I hear you saying they're giving you right now. What would you have to do to make that happen?
You know, that is something we've struggled with, because we have not been consulted in the process. We learned last night that the Planning Board has no influence on that, so that was obviously not the right venue for that. We understand that the Board of Selectmen has direct access to Trinity, and, you know, we would hope that you would exercise your leadership and consult us and say, "What do you think we should advise Trinity to do?"
Well, you're getting an exercise of my leadership right now, whether you like it or not.
No, but it's, I mean, we have not been asked to --
And the reason is, you understand why, because I see an Energy Committee that's pursuing its own agenda, oblivious to the legal ramifications of what you're doing, the practical ramifications of the destruction you could possibly bring about with this town if Trinity withdraws from this project. And so that's where I'm coming from. I have one more issue.
Let me just say, I, from what I heard yesterday, the issues that would make Trinity walk away are not energy issues, especially since they have not used any of the recommendations that we've put forward. So I --
The issues that would make me walk away if I was a developer was a town that was going behind my back, talking to former employees, a town that was talking about going to the congressional delegation to see if we can't get things passed, to force things to happen. That would cause me to walk away, especially on a complex project like the one that Trinity is taking on, that has its own other issues that they're trying to work through and that in this environment is a financially highly risky situation. I would not underestimate the risks that Trinity could pull out if we -- I would not underestimate the risks that Trinity could pull out if we add risks to this project that don't have to be there, rather than trying to figure out ways to get Trinity through. If this thing collapses, you might say the Energy Committee might take some pride in the fact that there's no net carbon going in because the empty field isn't producing carbon, but I can guarantee you that the historical, you know, the community here in town that cares about history is going to be really sad to see all those buildings gone. And I can tell you that on top of that, I'm confident that Belfort collapses as well. Because two buildings on a bare hill isn't going to...
Not enough.
Two hill, or if you prefer, two buildings in the middle of a Pulte housing complex isn't going to get it.
And I, you know, I don't, I really disagree with this. Nobody on the Energy Committee would want this project to fail. I would hate to see this happen. And from what I hear continuously, you know, it's things like the sound effects from the shooting range and the complex...
That's one of them, that's up at the top of it.
And that was always presented to us as a deal breaker and that needed to be settled first.
Right, right.
And clearly, you know, Trinity is in a very difficult economic position right now, which has changed so much over the last few weeks and months, you know? There is no doubt about that, and we're very well aware of that. We are the Energy Committee and we do have to advise on energy matters and...
You need to advise the town, yes.
So, you know...
Would it be easier for us to make this simple that just says, "Any advice you have has to come to the Board of Selectmen and we'll decide whether it should be passed out to Trinity?"
Well, I mean, we were advised to submit it to Sarah, and that's what we have done.
But ignore that with these outside conversations, so I think that's why we did that.
That's not advice, this is part of our due diligence, we have to...
If you think that those contacts are acceptable, we just have a real impasse here.
I don't think that contact was pursued, and it really accidentally happened as part of a fact-finding and due diligence exercise.
You understand, that should never happen again.
Absolutely, no.
Okay.
And I don't think it has. And the other part that you...
Well, it's happened twice, but let me...
Oh, I was unaware of that.
Well, the new ecology contract, if I'm Trinity, and I have, whether it's signed yet or not, if I have a plan to sign a contract with a contractor and I know that somebody at the town is already working that contractor, that changes my whole way of thinking about how to use that contractor. That would be in any project, that doesn't have to be something as big as this. So I think we've beaten that one to death. You understand that there should not be ever another one of those kinds of N-run contacts that goes on inadvertently, however it works, that should not happen. The second issue that I had, and it has to do with the article, again, we're watching that video, is that a member of this Board of Selectmen was asked to sign it.
The article?
Co-sign the article. Fortunately, the one lawyer we've got on the group had the good sense to defer. That would have corrupted that particular member's position on this Board of Selectmen to be able to do something, having already signed a document that went out into the public without the Energy Committee's approval, basically saying that Trinity's not doing this the right way. One of the signatories of the contract, when we talk about bad faith, one of the signatories of the contract itself had been asked to sign an article that was critical of the Trinity project that was put out without the Energy Committee's approval. And had he ever done that...
You know, I cannot speak to this and maybe we want to defer that because I had asked you to contact me about what was going to happen and I just...
Those are my two, well, it's in the video, I asked you to watch the video, you saw it.
I did, but I didn't see that.
Watch it again, then.
Okay.
Watch it again.
Okay.
So, okay, you've gotten the full load of my just complete dissatisfaction and alarm about what's going on right here. My concern is that that stops. And what I think we need to do, oh, any other, I've been doing most of the talking, you've been doing talking.
I mean, so I did watch the video, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Gus until we got here tonight. I will admit, I think to all of you, Jim, but I watched that video and the arrogance that started to come out towards the end, like, "Oh, well, we're going to go and we're going to file things that this is now really not historic because they're doing this, they're doing that." I'm like, "Why? That's not the role of the Energy Committee to question. The last thing we want to do is put a delay or anything in that we're causing Trinity." So one of the things I said to Christine, I was like, "Christine, I hope we don't..." You know, as they always say, "It's a straw that broke the camel's back." We heard Abby clearly state, the interest rates, the construction, there's a lot of costs that this is already starting to pile on them. I am very, very confident, I'm not going to put myself on a scale of 1 to 10, I'm a .05 to talk about energy and the ins and the outs. But what I do know is, we're dealing with a company that has over 35 years' experience of dealing with taking buildings that are absolutely decrepit and building them and putting brand-new structures that, I haven't read any articles, that they've been making it such that 40B people are in a disadvantage, that they're paying higher costs. So we're working with a top-rate organization, and I just, you know, Jim, towards the end, I think you guys just started playing off one another, and it was this level of arrogance that I would not expect from you, that I know you know what you're talking about, and I know you can bring that to the conversation of Trinity. But the moment that the word comes up that this guy used to work for Trinity and now we're going to have him backdoor, the one thing I would have thought you guys would have said is, "Whoa, whoa, do us one favor, we are not looking to get ourselves in trouble, don't go back and be the mouthpiece for our group to Trinity." No, 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 that's not how Medfield's doing it. The mouthpiece to Trinity representing the town is Sarah. Sarah can bring it, Sarah talks, like, so those are the things that we just have to be super, super conscious of. Again, no one did anything with ill intent, like, "Oh, you know, screw the Board of Selectmen." I know that's not how it's done. But when you get that momentum going and it's recorded, I mean, nothing prevents them from saying, you know, "Can we listen to what they're really wanting to do behind the scenes? That's not what we're trying to do as a town, that's not what you're trying to do as an Energy Committee." So it did get us on the defensive, like, "Whoa, like, we don't want to get sued," and we know we could. In the LDA, it talks about working in good faith, and if one group is not working in good faith, you're leaving yourself open for shots, and we don't want that to happen. So, you know, I know you're fired up for all the right reasons and you're a lot closer to it than I am, but when I watched the video, I was just like, "Ah, this is not, this is not..." And then to know that, you know, the letter, I thought that the article went into the patch because it was from the Energy Committee, and I think what I'm hearing tonight is, it was yourself and Fred that put something together but signed it as the Energy Committee, which is not what I think we want people doing, right? So just a lot of unfortunate scenarios here, but the red flag is, we have to be unbelievably cautious moving forward and respect that if you're a committee being assigned by a Board of Selectmen and we're the ones that sign the papers and we're on the hook, it just simply out of respect to make sure you're coming back here and not doing anything that makes us look like we're not being straightforward with our partner Trinity.
You know, granted, I see that point of view, and I guess the background is also that we were, I mean, there was no ill intent, and I really appreciate your saying that because there wasn't. What we're looking for is to sort of find the proper channels to submit the concerns we have. And you said, "Reach out to Trinity, you know, with your ground source heat pump, you know, proposal." Obviously, we can't do that because we can't, you know, we have no way to contact them.
Well, the suggestion that I made at the time that we had lunch was to, if you have, this had to do with Stephen Brown having at least indicated he had some, he had some knowledge about more recent legislation that might change the economics. And so I said, "Well, if you have the information, package it and send it to Trinity." And there was a way to do it, just through Sarah. The issue had to do with, who is it that's, who's asking who? And sending information into Trinity saying, "These things make sense, we've looked at it," and you got to obviously put something in that is technically compelling. It's not enough to say, "Oh, this is not a good consultant because they didn't come up with the answer." We thought, "Here's the question you should be asking, go off and do it again. You put that on Trinity and you get the answer. We don't have the bandwidth for that. We're trying to sit there, as you said, to fix the gun range and to do this and to do that, so we're just not ready to do that." There has to be more of an answer that is provided. I think, bottom line, and the reason you got for me what you got, is because I have been involved for, Bill, 12, 14 years. This is not something that just was a contract. This has been a more than a decade effort, and the people, as much time as I put in, it pales in comparison to what a bunch of other people have come to put together. If you look at what it took to get this whole concept to the point where we got a near-unanimous vote of the town in the disposition agreement just a year and a half ago, there is a lot of effort that people have put in, in a lot of different areas with a lot of different interests. And if even this past summer, you walked up there, even though it wasn't redeveloped, and you saw what was going on at the chapel, you could see the sheer potential that's there. So the idea that we're then going to come in and make the relationship with this developer more difficult because of the way we want to operate has absolutely got to stop. One piece, a big piece of that, I think is going to be between you and Cynthia as the co-chairs of the Energy Committee, to basically make sure that your subcommittees, when they do things, actually get approval for those actions that they want to take from the Energy Committee before they go off and do something somewhere else, if there's points of confusion. And I think maybe what we should look at doing, Christine, is to basically, from the Board of Selectmen, provide a clearer set of guidance around what our expectations are for how you will take whatever ideas you have, how you will interact with us, with Trinity, with us, to Trinity, however that's going to make the most sense. So there is absolutely no confusion about things like outside contacts and things like that. And I think we can put something like that together to try to erase, in fact, we'll welcome if there's parts that you would like us to address, you can tell us what those are, and we can handle that that way. There's no good reason why the Energy Committee can't continue to do the stuff that the Energy Committee has done for years, which is to come in with helpful ideas, presented, I guess I'll say presented humbly, but also presented competently to build the trust of the people you're trying to influence, that they don't have to have their guard up because they're going to get something and they're going to have to defend what they do, but in fact, you're coming in with something. The first time you show them something that you let them see make sense, you'll have more traction than you've got now.
Absolutely, and that's really our modus operandi, and, you know, we have, over the last two years, supplied resources, expert examples, you know, contacts to Trinity as we could, so they can explore this. And I want to go back to your financial...
Can I just stop?
No, no, I let you finish too. You talked about, you know, us suggesting, you know, making the case for ground source heat pump and maybe providing a financial analysis. If you look at the McPhail report that came in, they actually state that, you know, a partial ground source heat pump system would be useful, but they cannot provide the financial analysis themselves and advise Trinity to do a separate financial analysis.
And Trinity addressed that in last night's meeting by saying that from an operational standpoint, they're not prepared to manage multiple energy systems. So the fact that McPhail didn't provide additional, at the end of that report, McPhail said, "Here you go, you know, we think we've done the analysis that's appropriate for this part in the process." But that wasn't the issue, that wasn't why that was good. Trinity looked at it and said, "We've talked to our operating people," and they said, "That's not a practical answer."
Can I add one caveat to the letter that you're talking about? I would think it would make sense to copy Abby or Trinity just so that they're clear with...
Yeah, and we'd be open, it might make sense for us to open, you know, at least let them know that if there's anything about what we're proposing to put in place that they would like us to consider, you know, that would be more effective from there. Our point here, and even though we have some major points of disagreement on what I saw in that meeting, I, like Eileen, I'm sure that we all want to see this get to a good spot, but we got to get our act together on what's the most effective way to be persuasive and helpful, rather than kind of, "Well, we know something and you've got guys that don't know what they need to know." That's not, you're never going to win that.
No, I agree, and, you know, we've struggled with how that conversation can go because we, you know, we were told last summer, even before anything, that we should not engage in anything, and that there would be an opportunity. And the opportunity, what we were told, was through the planning board at the infrastructure meetings, which were in the last couple of weeks. And then we were told that we couldn't participate in that. So it is very confusing as to when in the process we can voice our concerns and our advice. And what we fear is that the plans are so far advanced that the next thing we're going to hear is, "Yeah, it's, you know, we've already made that decision and, sorry."
Well, maybe you're thinking about it the wrong way, where you're looking for where you can inject into the process of the planning board, or where you can inject, and what I'm going to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, that's not what I wanted to say. It really is how to, you're saying advise Trinity as well as the Board of Selectmen, and we have not seen the Board of Selectmen reach out and say, "What do you think of these plans?" And I understand now from yesterday's meeting is that all those things are not in the purview of the planning board, and that wasn't the right advice we got to submit commentary there. At the same time, we are told not to engage with Trinity, so we are a little bit at a loss where we come in in this process.
Well, I think, what I was starting to say is, I think maybe you're looking at it the wrong way. The challenge you have is, how do we build credibility and trust with Trinity to where they recognize the expertise we have, along with our understanding of their situation? In that meeting, there's members of the subcommittee don't even understand why Trinity doesn't have permits for this yet. So you have to, if you're going to engage with a developer like Trinity and tell Trinity you know what they should be doing better than they do, you kind of have to come up a steep learning curve of understanding the context of where this project is at in order to build the credibility to where, when you give them an idea, you know, they kind of give you the credibility to say, "Yeah, I guess they understand our situation." They really do identify with where we're at. When Abby says, "I don't have the bandwidth to deal with this issue right now," you might try, if you really think, "Yeah, but Abby, this is the crucial strategic fork in the road," well, how do you get them to understand that? How do you convey that? I don't think you convey that by basically sharpshooting whatever their plans are and then going into any meeting, that's a review meeting of the town, to say, "Well, we have this concern and that concern and that concern." You don't have the relationship.
But we were not, never allowed to build that relationship. We were told specifically not to interact with Trinity.
I need to address the full context of this. After the public hearings last spring, leading up to town meeting, on June 1st, I sent Abby an email and listed, "Here are the things the Energy Committee is looking for." She replied...
So you gave Abby something to do, okay.
Just, you know, giving her feedback as part of the town, right? She replied, we had a very good, you know, it was a very good reply, we started those conversations, we continued them in July and August, in fact, in August, well, and part of those conversations is, we provided them a white paper about geothermal district energy with a list of consultants, engineering firms, the industry associations. So we gave them lots of research. We are trying to help them with something that we know they haven't done before. We understand, it's hard, it's different. In addition, we set up a phone call with the EverSource...
What is it that you know they haven't done before?
They said they have never done a geothermal district system.
And how many large, complex, historic redevelopments have you done?
That's not the point. The point I'm making is, we have been trying to work collaboratively with them, provide them resources that we think will be helpful to them. When they said, "Look, we've got these six threshold issues, their term, that we have to resolve before we can get to that,"
Right.
we said, "Okay, we'll back off," hoping that, okay, you get those resolved, then we can reconnect and continue this discussion. That never happened.
Mark?
I've been on the periphery, but I was involved in the drafts and the refinements of the land disposition agreement. And basically, the time to negotiate the requirements, the rights and the obligations of the parties, which was carried out with independent counsel on behalf of the town, was through that process. That resulted in a document, whether you like it or not... Whether you like it or not, that document sets out the rights and responsibilities of the respective parties and how it goes forward from here. If something was omitted, overlooked, whatever, unless you can open it up and amend it, it is what it is.
So what Mark is saying, actually, I think, is right on the mark, no pun intended, that the requirements, and then when your point about the planning board, the planning board's job is to make sure that Trinity is complying with the requirements and the rules and the bylaws of the town. It's not to expansively increase requirements. And my point is, imposing, attempting to impose requirements or attempting to exert so much pressure that you're effectively imposing a requirement does not build the only way that you can help as an Energy, that any of us can help at this point above and beyond that agreement, is to build the trust and the mutual respect with Trinity and confidence in Trinity in whatever our areas of expertise are, that when we come to Trinity with Abby or whoever with an idea, they sit there and say, hmm, yeah, let's take a look at that. It's the credibility, it's the relationship that's going to get you where you're trying to go. It's not chiding, it's not multiple bang-bang, and here's the list of 35 things. In many ways, that big, long list you had, many of those questions could have been softened down to, can you tell us what the standard is that you're looking at? That's all it had to say, not all the other stuff. And to be, and then be prepared that if they said, well, it's, you know, it's the energy star, you know, which one is it? Or, gee, that one's a good one, but have you ever looked at this alternative standard?
But we never were given that opportunity, because the planning board said.
I don't think you ever even built the relationship to do that. I think there's more.
I think we had a relationship until we were told to send everything through Sarah Poson, not contact them directly.
Actually, I don't think that was the case, Jim.
They were aware, that's exactly what happened.
No.
They were aware of our concerns, and they knew we would like to continue the conversation. They could have, when they got to a point, they could have reached back out, and I would have been very happy to engage. Instead, I see, okay, they're going to the planning board with a bunch of, you know, plans. I'm going to make the comment, which is my right as a citizen and as part of the process.
If you want to make comments, it's your right as a citizen, that's fine, you absolutely can. If you're interested as an Energy Committee in helping the town work with Trinity, you're going to have to rethink your flexibility around expressing your rights as a citizen. That's just, either you're supporting the membership of the, you're a member of the Energy Committee, supporting the charter and the purpose of the Energy Committee, or you're just somebody who happened to get himself appointed to the Energy Committee who feels totally flexible to turn into individual mode at any point in time if it just seems like it's a more, you know, if you feel like it. If you want to do that, you can. I'm saying that that doesn't work, that's not effective. Your frustration about Trinity not listening is not because Trinity said, gee, these are really smart guys, let's ignore them. It's that the tone and the approach has not been effective. You know, it's not, that's not an indictment. We all try to figure out how to build relationships with, you know, especially on important things. How do I get to a person? How do I understand their personality? How do I find where I can add value in the places that they are looking for value? And over that, you build a relationship that gives you more influence. This that I'm seeing here is not helping you, but the reason I'm getting all spun up about it is because not only is it not helping you, it's hurting the town, because I think it's hurting the project.
You know, I can only reiterate that we, this is how we started out, and that's how we really want to work and have worked, until we were told we can't talk to Trinity, and there was no way.
We never told you couldn't talk to them, we told them, if you wanted to talk to them, you had to pass it through Sarah.
Yeah.
Single point.
Right, and so we, you know, we passed it to Sarah, but there was no relationship anymore. It was just a submission of, you know, suggestions.
Well.
And I think, you know, I think that sort of influences, I mean, what you're saying is that we're, you know, pursuing that in a wrong way.
Right.
It's, there is, you know, we don't, we have no advice on how to pursue that relationship at this point anymore.
Perhaps as part of checking in with Trinity on this letter, we might also ask Trinity, we might, it's not part of the letter necessarily, but we can ask Trinity, you know, the Energy Committee, they undoubtedly at least will get wind of this heated conversation. The Energy Committee obviously has an interest in contributing where they can, where you would like them to. They're frustrated, or they're, you know, they're puzzled, or just perplexed about how to go about interacting and contributing to your project in a way that you will find valuable, that will let them, you know, provide their expertise. Can you give us your inputs on how you would most like to be able to, if at all, or if and when, maybe is a better way to put it? Are there things that we as a town can do to be more responsive and more helpful to you, to include the Energy Committee? I'm happy, the point here isn't to not allow expertise to be applied, the point is to make sure it's applied in a way that respects the fact that we have a, it's a true land, you know, land development contract with Trinity. That's been specified, it's boxed in because of the nature of the project, and I would say because of the nature of Trinity, and how they've chosen to, they've built a relationship with us, they're doing stuff, they're doing more stuff that's accommodating our preferences than I ever expected a developer to do.
You know, I agree, and, you know, when the two developers put forward the proposals, I don't think there was doubt in anybody's mind that this was more desirable for the town.
Right.
And we do want to make sure this is a successful project, as I read out earlier, that is.
So you've heard the challenge that you have as a co-chair, you and Cynthia have. There's clearly some breakdowns in what subcommittees are doing on their own, that haven't gotten the overall committee approval, and that's, I think, something you'll have to tighten up. Jim, you're getting the full blast, you're hearing from me, and you're getting it unvarnished. You know, it's all, yep, absolutely. I would ask one thing, just, you know, because it's out on the table here, that article was published that stated it was feasible for Trinity to achieve net zero at the state hospital. I heard you state in that video that it was not. So I would like to see, with the Energy Committee's approval this time, a correction, a revision, or, you know, an update to that article that makes clear where you're, I don't know for sure where your real position is on that. If you want to express an opinion of what you think is possible, okay. I'd be careful not to have it simply be sort of an appeal to the public sentiment, you know, to try to build emotional momentum, because that's not going to help Trinity.
And I don't think that that's what.
The more objective and clinical some of those points are, maybe in some ways simple the points are, certainly when it comes to getting Trinity involved, I'm guessing those simpler messages are going to be more effective. All right?
I think Mark wanted to say something to that.
Only if the letter's going to be generated to Trinity, I would make it very clear that the Energy Committee is available as a resource to provide input, that they are not any kind of town, part of the town's regulatory land use.
Right. I think this will be a letter that will be generated for the Energy Committee, but Trinity will be copied on it. So the intent of the letter is to make sure there's no lingering confusion around what the expectations are between the Energy Committee and certainly the Board of Selectmen. And letting Trinity know what those expectations are helps, like, clear the air a little bit, I think. So that's the point behind that. Hilly, I wouldn't have brought you in and hit you in quite, you and I have been friends for a long time.
Well.
I would not have done what I just did, not having felt like, knowing you well enough, that you would have been able to withstand what I just did. I did it because I want to make it clear in no uncertain terms, this is an extremely important project. I have personally been invested in this project for 14 years, and my investment pales in comparison to the investment that guy's made, the investment a guy like, someone like Steve Nolan has made, the investment that the Development Committee's made. And what you're seeing in that heat is exactly how much I care about making sure this project makes it through successfully, because I truly think it's going to be a transformative project for this town. And I don't want specific agendas to get this whole thing off the rails. And it alarmed me, as I said, several things in that meeting alarmed me, maybe what we can just drop it down to is a lack of discipline, or arrogance, intentional or otherwise.
Well, no, I think also, you know, I think some of the guidance we were asking for, we have not been provided for, you know, how the process works and, you know, when is a good time. So I would appreciate getting some of that guidance.
Okay. Well, we can address that in the letter. Okay, and let's see, I didn't bring my laptop, but apparently we have questions. Let's see.
I'll start from the top. So I think it's just commentary, but.
It's just, yeah, there's nothing in there that's, okay. All Fred Davis, all supporting the arguments you were making, but not, I don't think adding anything beyond the points that you were making.
Right, so.
So, next action will be, oh, two things. Number one, if the article needs, I would like to see the article corrected, because I'm quite frankly confused about what your position really is. We'll draft the letter, and that may take a little bit of time to draft that, but our intention will be to make it clarify the expectations. If there's anything in the draft of the letter that there are yet more things you'd like to clarify and have us address, then I would say that's a fair, you know, that draft letter, and if it's a piece that there's confusion on your part about what the expectations are of the BOS, I'm happy to provide whatever clarifications required.
Yeah, it's actually, you know, we've really been puzzled on how to participate in this process after.
Yep, Mark.
So I can indicate in a nutshell, as I said, the starting point is the agreement between the parties and what that spells out. I know we went to great lengths to address some of the environmental stuff that was carried over. I don't know, frankly, I believe that energy efficiencies were addressed in there at least in some brief ability. As far as the land use authority, we passed the zoning at town meeting. The planning board has a limited role to play. It is, I believe, a special permit, it may only be site plan, but at any rate, their criteria is set out in the zoning bylaw, and that's what they're confined to. So the criteria for special permit or for site plan review are enumerated in that bylaw. They can't, they're not on a general authority to go into every fine point of the construction of the process. Their only authority is those criteria that are spelled out in the zoning bylaw.
So I'm going to put, not, I'm going to interpret what you just said, Mark, for purposes of the discussion the non-lawyers just had. You're not, none of us are in a position to introduce or impose new requirements on Trinity. All of us are in a position to try to understand Trinity's situation, work to build the relationships of trust and competence in the respective areas that we have, to encourage Trinity to do things that we think make sense, to introduce ideas to Trinity that we think Trinity as a business should actually think are good ideas, and understanding that when we do that, that's the limit of how far we take it. Here's a great idea, here's this, we've tried to articulate it in the clearest and probably most efficient way we can, you know, Abby or whoever, we think this is worth looking at, and one of two things happens. One of them is nothing. They say, thank you very much, and either because of bandwidth, or because they know things you don't know, they just don't do it. Or, we got the call that says, can I sit down and, can you tell me a little more about this thing? It's like opening up an oyster. You know, they don't all come shocked and on ice with hot sauce. You know, it's going to be, to get it started, you have to cut the first muscle to get the shell a little loose.
Right.
And then it might, and then from there it builds. And if we can do that, I think Trinity winds up with a more successful project, we wind up with a more successful project, we also wind up with a more enjoyable experience in going through it all. So.
So, you know, I mean, if Mark wants to give us some guidance on what that contract entails and what is already in there would be.
Well, I mean, the contract.
It's the LDA, it's the Land Disposition Agreement.
Yeah, I'm saying, Hilly, I think that, unless you're just going to want to know what, where the boundary lines are, that's fine, but that I don't think is going to help the committee as a whole figure out, how do we actually connect in a productive, mutually beneficial way with Trinity?
Well, there we really need help, because we have been stopped from having that relationship, clearly.
Well, then, let's start, my suggestion there would be to pick one of the most important things that you think Trinity should take an honest look at. Avoid judging who Trinity is using, avoid nitpicking the past studies that they've done, like in the case, I'm not picking on you here, but.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm here.
The one about, you know, the custom energy, just not district energy, but, you know, the local thing, the issue wasn't the financial stuff that wasn't done, the issue was an operational issue. They said that plainly in the planning board. So you have to listen. If you still think they're wrong, or they've underestimated, that's okay, you can make a run at it, but if they've already made a decision, then what I would do is make a run at it with a very short, concise, clear, you know, message that says, you know, I actually think, I know why you're doing it, here's what you think, but this is the stuff, I just want to make sure you're aware these subsidies or incentives are in place, because that could make a big difference in your calculation. That's, I mean, it's almost a teaser message, but then, again, you put, you know, when you go fishing, you don't get to tell the fish to bite on the hook. You put the fish in the water, and, you know, the hook in the water, and sometimes something bites, and sometimes it doesn't, and you just keep trying.
I know, but I hope you hear what I'm saying, that we were not given that opportunity.
Well, I accept that you're saying it, I may not even agree with it, but I accept that that's your perspective. I'm really saying that the solution, even if that's a true perspective, the solution is not to become more forceful and more critical of everything else. I don't know of any good way to do it other than to continue to offer good ideas, and when you don't get the response you want to critically self-evaluate, what is it about the way we presented it, you know, timing, format, is there a better way, or is there a better person for that matter sometimes? But I don't know how to solve the problem.
But I mean, are we then, sort of, then we have that request anymore that we don't contact Trinity? I mean, we are, since last summer.
For the time being, I think, I'm not at all comfortable. I need some confidence here.
But I mean, you're suggesting that we build a relationship with them, and obviously that is highly desirable for everybody. I just don't see how we can do that at this point.
So what would probably help there, as this letter is being drafted, is for you to explain your concern, if you can, explain your concerns in a particular scenario and say, when this thing comes up, what do I, you know, how could, we have this, how should we handle this scenario? And that will at least inform the expectations, and maybe get us somewhere.
I think what you're trying to cut off.
I don't understand that, yeah.
I think the big thing we're trying to prevent is, if there were six or seven groups that all wanted to have a seat at the table.
Yeah.
Then Trinity's negotiating with seven different organizations in Medfield. Right now, they're negotiating with the three selectmen, we get the town behind it, we need to keep it clean and crisp. So I know it may be frustrating that you're not getting a seat at the table, and you're not getting dialogue one-on-one with Abby. I don't, right? So, like, so there are reasons why there are touch points. And I also think there's going to be times, you're not going to like their decisions. Like, it is what it is to that extent, that they're going to do the best they can, they're going to build this the way they can and be as conscious of the environment, and you know they are, like, they've said that so many times.
All of us have said that, yes.
So you know they're not going to do things to cut corners and be malicious, so your wealth of experience and knowledge to bring it to the table, if they pick pieces of it, great. If they don't, I know you shouldn't be offended, and it's not an insult to you. They're a very large building company that they need to keep moving, and they, if they had only built two or three buildings, I'd be a smidgen concerned, they know what they're doing. This isn't their first rodeo. So in some ways, I don't want to be insulting to them that we know more than you know, it's like, eh, let's be careful how we say that. So, I mean, you are a resource without a shadow of a doubt, they know that there are a committee of committed individuals from Medfield that are there. The moment they have any questions, they know they're very knowledgeable people, but to be frustrated because they're not reaching out to you, I think you're going to set yourself up for a lot of disappointment, because they're running a very successful business, and I'm sure in each project, they're reaching out as they can, but it's not their priority one every morning. I just, I accept that.
No, and it is not, I mean, they, as you say, they have done large projects, and they have done very successful projects with high level of sustainability. So it is, you know, maybe, I don't know. know, maybe, I don't know why there are, why they don't include that in this project.
Because they're not going to, so like Mo and all these different departments, they don't have a seat at the table. They are working through their touchpoints. So it's not that they don't want to talk to you, it's just not their business model.
Right.
They're working, they're negotiating with the town, they're working with the boards in the towns that have been assigned to move this project along. They're keeping it clean, they're keeping it crisp, and they should. If I was in their shoes, I'd want to do it. I know there's residents in Medfield that want to help me, and I know if I need to go to them, I can absolutely reach out and I'm going to be able to get a meeting with them, or I can send an email. But, but don't, there's never been any expectation when we had various negotiations that groups within Medfield were going to have a seat at the table. There is not.
No, I agree, and, you know, I think that's where our role as advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen comes in. I would hope that when there's any opportunity to talk about sustainability and the energy, that you would reach out to us and say, "What do you want us to look at, and what have you gleaned from this?" And, yeah, if that was happening, then great, but it hasn't happened either.
I don't even know if they're genuinely at that point. When you watch what they're going through right now, I mean, they were saying the other night, what's it, 25%? Like, they're not even halfway through where they need to be. There's still elements of the project that they don't know. Like, they're finding more water damage. There's so many things coming at them every day.
Right.
So you have one focus. You are hyper focusing on what you know they can do. Unfortunately, they don't have that ability to do that, right? And so we need to respect what they're going through. Every time they open a door up in a building up there, it might be like, "Oh, here comes another landmine," right? And yet, they still sign the letter with Medfield, they're still on the hook to do certain things. So, no, I just hope you can take a step back and give them the ability to start moving. They haven't put a shovel to the dirt up there yet. So there's still plenty of room and time as we go through this to make sure that if there are questions, we can go about communicating in the manner that respects them and they can respect us in return.
I just want the board to be cognizant of the fact that if you build in sort of sustainability at an early time, it is much easier and much cheaper to do that. So I would hate for you guys, because you're obviously negotiating with them, and to find out that at some point there is going to be, "Oh, well, you know, that's way too much into the project to incorporate that."
I don't think it's going to happen.
I think it could happen. I mean, to the extent that, I mean, I'm sensitive to that comment about, well, there's decisions you make early on, and that's, I understand that. And there may be some ways to make that point on at least the most critical areas that you could get, you know, if, as opposed to, you know, a three-page thing that you did this wrong, this wrong, this wrong, this wrong, you basically say, you know, "One of the issues that you're coming to here is this particular decision. It's a kind of decision that because of the nature of how it's going to affect everything else, you sort of have to look at it now, or if you're going to make the best decision, here's our thinking at this early stage, here's how we would look at it," and drop it on them that way. And again, that kind of a thing can't be a 35-page document, probably.
No.
It's got to be something that's, if it's not just a teaser, it's a concise enough document that they'll get why you're saying what you're saying, and they might, and ideally you give them some confidence that you actually, you know, "We looked at this. This is what everybody does. This is one that gets me all the time." You know, most people just go and do this. It's like, "Well, that was what I was thinking of doing." And then they say, "But the real better thing, you know, it would be better for you to do this, but you don't have to make that decision for two months. But the real best thing is over here. The only problem is you've got to commit. Now I have three options." That's the thing, speaking personally, when people hook me on that stuff, that's what they do. The first thing they say is the thing I had in mind.
Yeah.
The second thing is the fallback that doesn't force me to make the decision, and the third thing is what might be the technically optimum, except what you really did is you just convinced me I had to move this decision point forward in order to do that, and you made it look attractive enough that I at least am going to spend some time thinking about it.
Well, I can, I can tell you right now that we, what our main suggestion would be, and that would take us entirely out of the picture, is that they actually would hire New Ecology to advise them on sustainability early on.
Strong piece of advice. This town has zero interest or reason to tell Trinity who they should hire. That's actually an alarm bell. What I did is I heard New Ecology mentioned so many times. I went on their website. All I found in staff was four people in their 30s, but their Board of Advisors is a very interesting board of former political operatives: Doug Foy, Scott Harshberger, Patrick DeValle. And that leads me to wonder exactly what is New Ecology, because these four people that show up on their staff, sure as heck, didn't have the power to bring those kinds of people together. So I don't know if those people came together and formed New Ecology. Jim, you probably know the background. I don't, but just looking at that, you guys are way awfully interested in that particular company as the only company that can possibly there. And I'm not satisfied, I understand why.
That, I mean, that came up because Trinity itself put it in the proposal. It was in their proposal.
So it wasn't their proposal, so why are you passing it?
Including the resumes of those three people that you just mentioned.
So, that says they've done that. You don't need to tell them what they need to do. They've already figured that out on their own, and they're using that the way they see fit. We do not have a role in telling Trinity who they need to hire to carry their projects out.
So I think what I'm hearing, Gus, is perhaps if I recast that commentary and said something along the lines of, "Great, you're at 25% complete construction plans. This is actually the ideal time to have a building science firm like New Ecology," or I can name others if you'd like.
I'm telling you...
To look at things. And they said, actually, at the sixth, when that came up, they said, "Oh gee, maybe we should have them do a review of the plans." So if I could submit a comment that would say, "This is a great time to do that because, you know, as I look at the plans, there's some opportunities..."
You didn't hear what I just said. You didn't, I said, "We should not be in the business of telling Trinity who to hire."
I can make it generic. I could say, "A building science firm who can look at these insulation details at the 25% complete level and give you ideas and technical advice that goes beyond my level of expertise, but then give you the real advice and costs, and then you can determine what's feasible and what's not."
So why do you know about building science, and you assume Trinity doesn't?
I am a provisionally certified HERS-rater. I have taken a course in building science. I, and I'm not saying they don't, and I said in my comment that building science is a very specialized expertise. I don't expect architects or developers to know it in detail.
It doesn't matter what you know.
They know it exists.
Go back to the relationship building, Jim. If you think they know it too, how does you telling them what they need to do in an area that they already know help you build a relationship? If you tell them something about something they don't know, then you might build a relationship.
That's right.
But when you come in and tell them who you think they need to hire in an area that they already are fully capable of making that decision, you lose credibility. You don't gain credibility.
And I tried to tell them some things they didn't know about geothermal, gave them a bunch of resources. They came back and said, "No, we're going to ignore all that. We're going to use the guys we normally use."
Again, another argument about wanting to tell them who they need to go to, and I'm saying...
I gave them a list, and they did not contact, as far as I know, they did not contact.
It seems their decision. They're right.
But, Jim, they don't have to. I guess at the end of the day, you're going to find that they're not going to do everything you want them to do, and that's the way it is. I mean, we may not like it, but they're our developer. They've laid this all thing out, I guarantee, in much greater detail than any of us can even wrap our head around. They're looking at all those buildings. So it is what it is. You may not be happy with it, but you can't tell them how to do their job.
I'm not trying to tell them how to do their job. I'm saying, at this stage, you should be thinking about building science.
But you weren't. When you say that, you're saying, you're basically telling, you're saying, "At this stage is what you need to think about." So if you told me that, I'd be like, "Okay, you're telling me how to do my job," versus, you know, "This is where you're at. I'm curious, where are you thinking to go from here?" Ask them what they're going to do instead of telling them what you think they should do.
And when we asked them about what New Ecology's role was going to be, they said, you know, "The greenhouse gas calculation for MEPA and their whatever third-party certification."
And why is that not okay?
That answered your question.
Because that does not look at the current plans...
But that's their...
...and give them advice about, "Hey, you can add some insulation at the basement." That's the kind of thing that firm would do for them.
Okay, but again, that's you telling them what you think, how they should be employing a contractor. That's not our role. That is 100% not our role. It's going to kill you that you can't? You might know something, but if you lay it out and they say, "You know, we should go ask Jim a question," then they can go do that. But it's going to frustrate you if every step of the way, you see a gap, and you know how to fill it, and they're not going to listen. We, that is on our role to micromanage them to that level. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job laying out what you, how that piece of property can be built out to try to reach the goals that we have for 2030 and 2050, right? That is absolutely your role to educate. After that, it's going to kill you, but you don't get to hold the baton the rest of the way. It is Trinity's responsibility 110%. And you cannot continue to expect them to say, "Okay, what do you want us to do next?" It's not going to happen. Never going to happen. It's frustrating, but it's not going to happen.
So I also need some clarification. You said something about, you know, being, representing the Energy Committee and pivoting back to being a private citizen. Like, at the planning board meeting yesterday, we commented as private citizens because that's where, how we felt, you know, we, I mean, nobody identified themselves as Energy Committee members, and we identified ourselves with addresses. I mean, how does it work? Like, being part of the Energy Committee does not allow me to comment as a private citizen?
No. Well, actually, I think the question goes back to you, Hilli. You're a co-chair of the Energy Committee.
Mm-hmm.
If a meeting is being held to address issues of concern to the Energy Committee, with you as a chair of that committee, wouldn't you want to have your committee have specific people who speak and are speaking for the committee?
We tried that, but, you know, we actually contacted the planning board, and neither Sarah nor the chair got back to us. So, you know, we are, again, we don't really know where we stand and how that works.
I mean, what is it, I guess what I'm losing is, what is it you're not understanding? I understand only one person will speak, and they will identify themselves, and they'll call out their address, and if you are speaking for the Energy Committee, you might say, "I'm speaking on behalf of the Energy Committee." That's what I'm, you know, if you're a member of the Energy Committee and you're in complete disagreement with whatever the Energy Committee agreed to, and you say, "I don't care. I'm going to say what I want to say," you know, if I were the chair and I had somebody on my committee do that in a meeting that the committee was attending with the purpose of carrying out the committee's business, I'd be pretty hacked at that person. Yeah, I'd be pretty mad about it. But other than that, I'm not sure I understand the point of confusion.
I mean, you had some comment there where you said earlier, you know, whether to pivot back and forth between representing the Energy Committee and being a private cit, or representing...
Yeah.
And I just didn't understand what you were trying to say.
The context of that, rightly or wrongly on my part, was Jim was talking about, "Well, I was speaking there as an individual," and I think that was in response to my going after you guys for speaking the way you were speaking. And it's like, well, if you're, you know, in your case, you're a subcommittee chair, or the subcommittee chair is discussing this stuff, but then when I call someone on the carpet for it, it's like, "Oh, no, no, that was just me speaking as an individual." I'm saying, that's kind of a game. You're coming, if you are on the committee and you're dealing with issues the committee's dealing with, especially if you're in a leadership position on the committee, then when I call you out for, you know, taking, for getting kind of outside of the boundary lines of what would be appropriate, and say, "Well, but that was me as an individual," I'm saying, "I don't, I don't buy that argument." You can do it. I'm not saying you can't do it. You can. I'm just saying, don't expect me to give you a lot of credibility for that argument, because that's kind of playing the game.
Right. The other issue is that, you know, about the article, we understand that there's a new editor, and the articles are not getting published in, as quickly as we used to have them. So, you know, it may not be in the timeframe.
This is in the Medfield Press?
Yeah. That, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that it has been our experience.
I would just get ahold of the Medfield Press and say, "Hey, we want to update that article." They didn't publish it on like Thursday, I thought Thursday...
You'd get it in the week before, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, you have to bring it in the end before.
If you want it Friday, it's going to be Tuesday before.
I mean, and you're suggesting any way it goes through the Energy Committee first, right?
Well, what I would do is I, part of it's been published on, in patch. You can correct that. If, I would just call the Medfield Press and say, "Hey, look, we've got some revisions to that. Is it too late to pull it? We'll get it to you for next week." If it is too late to pull it, then what I would do is just submit for the next week a correction.
So, you said earlier that you wanted that to be going through the Energy Committee for approval first?
Well, yeah, that's a requirement.
Yeah, okay.
You can't, if there's a communication coming out of the Energy Committee, subcommittees can't just publish things from the committee. I mean, I would think you wouldn't even want that to happen.
Right.
Because basically, they're representing work of the Energy Committee. You have a sort of a sprawling committee, so there's a lot of different people doing a lot of different things.
A lot of work.
Yeah. So I would, I would expect that you as a co-chair would want to have a degree of both control and cognizance over what's going on.
So, I mean, that, I think our next meeting is early April, so we're looking at mid-to, mid-April, mid-late April.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Hilli.
Thank you.
You weathered the storm well.
Next topic.
And thanks for your comments as well, Jim. You were, you weren't spared. Yeah.
We also asked for the signage, and it's the last item on your...
Ah, sure, let's take a look.
Do I actually have to stay here until 11:00?
Oh. You said, "Do you want to, you want us..."
Number 12.
Did you say you want to stay here till 11:00, or do you...
No.
All right, we'll jump...
The agenda does not mean you do not get to be here.
Yeah.
I just want to sort of emphasize, you know, those plans are developing, and we heard today that there's already quite a relief plan for the historic base, so we may not move that, so we'll take that up.
Well, I can't speak for the Board of Selectmen, but just reading item 12, I think you can leave early with confidence that there's an excellent chance that that sign request will get approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Let's see. Action items. Vote to sign a letter of support for community project funding. Earmark request to Congressman Okenklaas for sidewalk reconstruction project around the Pleasant Street neighborhood. This sounds like we are going to accept money if we can get it to build sidewalks.
Yes.
This might be an hour's discussion of whether this is a good idea or not.
It does include a commitment from the town. If we do get this, we do have to provide a community match. We'd be looking at approximately $280,000, which we've been working with Mo on, that we would recommend that you pull from Chapter 90.
So they would give us that much?
They would give us one, it was 1.1, Frank? 1.1, 1.2, and then we would need to provide...
Oh, 1.2 million?
Yeah.
If we match it with 280,000?
280,000 dollars.
That seems like a side dunk.
Hmm. I bet you can talk them down. I bet you can talk Okenklaas down 275.
Do those sidewalks on Pleasant Street are horrible.
Well, and if you remember when we did the, Mo came in to do the sidewalk study, the downtown was really one of the areas we wanted to emphasize. The congressman called us last week and asked us to come up with an infrastructure project, and, you know, all of us independently came up with Pleasant Street, so it was nice. We all had the same project when we sat down at the table.
Oh, it's horrible. Yeah, I'd give that a second. It's horrible.
Yeah. So it's a really good project, and it ties in with some work that the Water and Sewer Board is doing as well, so. And the application is due this evening at midnight.
Oh, okay. I was trying to kick him under the table. It wasn't working.
So we can keep talking about it, but you've only got two more hours.
Motion?
Yes, all right. Oh, yeah, I forgot. It's my job tonight.
This is the practice before it gets real.
I know. Vote to sign...
You might be submitting it right now as you approve it.
I'm also practicing for my new role, assuming things turn out well.
Vote to sign a letter of support for community project funding earmark request to Congressman, how do you say his last name?
Okenklaas.
Okenklaas, for sidewalk reconstruction project around the Pleasant Street neighborhood.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Signature delivered. Signed.
Done.
All right. Next, vote, whoops, vote on the approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the Medfield Police League, MCOP, AFL-CIO Local 257 Contract. The, let's see, I have to find the note. There it is. The, the two of us, actually, because Pete was tied up, had an executive session prior to this meeting, and in that executive session, we voted to accept the memorandum of agreement establishing the contract for the police before we actually vote officially here, or, I think it was just an announcement that I...
We already voted.
We already voted, so this is actually just an announcement that we did approve it, so people know. This is, for those who follow contract negotiations, know that this has taken a while to get to closure. There are a number of issues, probably the most significant of which in this contract is in agreement with the police union to move out of civil service pending approval by the town of an article up at the upcoming town meeting, and a confirming vote at the election in 2024. election in 2024. Uh, what this will do, uh, if we can get out of civil service, there's been a longstanding difficulty in recruiting police officers right now, just because of the overall national environment. Uh, the general, general context, context makes it harder. Civil service with its restrictions make it even harder to bring that about. Being able to go out, outside of civil service and, and be able to recruit, we expect will give us more flexibility, uh, both to recruit people and, and at least be able to tap a broader pool of potential candidates to fill slots. And we expect that's going to make a big difference in the ability to build the police force that's staffed where we want it to be and committed to, uh, serving Medfield as we move forward from here.
Other precedents in other towns?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of towns around that are, that are out from civil service. For anyone who cares, the, the current police officers who are in, were in civil service will be allowed to remain in civil service, so it's not a, it's not like anybody gets cut off from where they're going, it's just that our direction moving forward from here would be outside of civil service.
It's all good.
I get all that right, Christine? Pretty much? Okay. Uh, the, there is a collective bargaining committee and given the effort that it took to get this job done, just want to recognize Mike Markucci, Mike Pastore, Kathy Vandenboom, Mark Fisher, Chief Garette, and Christine for their diligent, persistent, dogged efforts to bring this agreement about. And while I'm doing that, I think it's appropriate for me to express appreciation to the police union for their willingness to look at different ideas, entertain those ideas, and come together in an agreement. So, uh, those times when we get to points of agreement in this town, it's cause for, for Thanksgiving and, and sometimes celebration, so, uh, we're looking forward to that, this being a good contract. Uh, next, vote to sign the Southeast Regional Services Group, otherwise known as SRG, award for 3123 to 22924. And Eileen, if you have, that's one thing I didn't print out on our packet, there's, I think, six or seven different, uh, because you're making the motions, if you can call out the company that it's being awarded to and the amount, just for the broad category.
If you want, I have it in paper here, if you want.
Much easier than scrolling.
All right, so then we have Mari Paving Reclamation out of Hollison for $58,625. PJ Keating, his total is $533,000.
You might want to call out what the, what the contract, like.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay. So the pavement reclamation, um, that's Mari Paving. And then Super Pave Hot Mix Asphalt Zone B. I don't even want to know what that is, I'm going to be honest. PJ Keating, but I did actually hear Mo give me a little overview on some of this stuff when I met with him two weeks ago. Uh, total bid price is $533,725.10. Rubber chip seal, Allstate asphalt out of Sunderland, Mass., $309,250. Bonded wearing course, Allstate asphalt, again, out of Sunderland for $300,950. Crack sealing, Indus Inc. out of Braintree for $60,960. And then guardrail installation of steel beam, Premier Fence out of Canton, and that total on that is $43,540.
I think that was a motion, so I can second it.
Do I have more?
Yes, wait, wait, there's more. This is against a new news commercial.
Structure work.
As we speak.
Structure work with Martinez Road Construction out of Fitchburg. That one is $26,625. And then the last one, I think, let me just double check that before I say that, yep, is snow and material hauling, LaRusso out of Plainville, and that is $6,000. So all in, this is $1,332,675, $1,332,675 with 10 cents.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Okay.
All right, so we sign this tonight?
You can sign that tonight.
Okay.
I think it, do, I think.
Oh, you signed that one? Okay.
I'll take my copy back. Number seven, I'm actually going to fold, I apologize, I was a little overzealous in putting that on the agenda, I was not prepared yet this evening to discuss that.
No worries.
Okay. Uh, next item is the FY '24 budget.
Mm-hmm. So a couple of things to discuss tonight in terms of town meeting and the fiscal year '24 budget. Um, this evening, I am looking for a vote from the Board of Selectmen. I've been talking, um, since early December and letting you know that I had included a 3% cost of living for our non-union employees. You're aware of the fire contract, the police MOUs has been released as of tonight, so both our union, um, police and fire have received a 3% cost of living, and that's why I recommended for the non-union as well.
Yep.
Um, the personnel board met this morning and they voted officially, uh, to agree to the 3%, and I'm looking for the Board of Selectmen to do the same this evening.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that is a 3% cost of living for the non-union, and it also involves a 3% merit pool for the managerial.
Okay. Comments? Any?
No, I think it's certainly fair, the right thing to do.
Okay. I guess my only, my only general observations around this is we, we're, uh, first off, there's obviously consistency we're worrying about, we're, we're, we're being mindful of. The market studies that we're doing around compensation are not yet done, so at some point in the, in the next, is it year?
Delayed, right? It was delayed for this year, we're anticipating having it prepared for the annual town meeting in 2024.
Okay. So we, there is, in fact, there has been an effort to do that kind of market survey to see, I, I think the town has always done its best to at least be in the middle, if, you know, we don't want to be on the bleeding edge, but we also don't want to be dragging.
Correct.
Uh, and periodically, you have to do a market study to do that, which we will do, but it won't be done for a year, so, given the overall inflationary environment that we are, have been in, given the overall, uh, difficult times we had a few years ago, this makes eminent good sense to me. Okay. Motion?
Oh, I do have to motion that, okay. Uh, all right, motion, vote 3% COLA and merit for non-union town employees for FY '24.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Uh, next, review the annual town meeting warrant articles.
So I'm going to hold, uh, since Selectman Peterson is not here, I'll ask that you hold the warrant articles till the next meeting, but I would ask, and, you know, we'll, we'll send you out a few meetings, you're going to vote to actually sign the warrant at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I had originally anticipated to do that tonight, however, I have to wait for the vote at the election on Monday, because if it changes your name.
That's right.
I must reflect that in the warrant, so.
Yep. Never count your chickens before they hatch.
Exactly, so I am, I am waiting for that, I will be doing it live on Monday evening. Um, so once we have that, we'll post the warrant publicly, there is a draft available on the website, and I would ask that the Selectmen start reviewing the draft I've given you tonight to review the articles so that we can start to take our positions, so we're ready when we go to print, um, and, uh, you know, just shortly after the warrant hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll hold that.
All right.
And then I just wanted to, uh, give you a brief update, there it is, a brief update on the fiscal year '24 budget. We've been working, uh, very diligently with the school committee, um, and the warrant committee, uh, to come up with the budget. I know, when I think, I last presented to you, we had a delta between our, our revenues and expenditures of over $600,000. Um, we have been able to bring that down periodically with some changes to the budget. The warrant committee asked, uh, the town to make some budget revisions, we've asked the school committee to make budget revisions, which they're taking up Thursday evening, and we currently have a delta, uh, as of this evening of $123,133. Um, and I anticipate the school committee will, uh, make those budget revisions and we should have a balanced budget, um, as of Friday. Just to give you an idea of the budget revisions on the town side since I last presented, um, we had a couple of fixed cost reductions, um, and they're fixed cost reductions that are both shared by the school and the town, um, and show separately on the budget worksheet outside of each operating budget, and that is, we are going to move forward with the property insurance, um, deduction, moving from the $1,000 to the $5,000. Our insurance company has presented an analysis for us that if we had adopted that, um, I believe it was seven years ago, uh, we would have had an $80,000 savings on our premium, even including those, uh, those projects that we had to pay the $5,000 for. So, we're going to move forward, that's a $27,000 reduction in the budget. We are able to reduce our workers' compensation budget by $20,000 with the caveat that if any of these budget revisions include layoffs, which I don't anticipate, we would need to restore that $20,000. Um, and given the weather, um, Mo's going to think I'm jinxing this, but given the weather, and it's almost April, and it's spring, we are reducing the snow and, uh, snow and ice non-appropriation budget, um, by $75,000. So those are our fixed costs.
People fall in store.
I know, I know.
But it melts, that's a good thing.
I know.
Keep calling half days for a town hall when it's not snowing.
Uh, you, should have known.
Oh, wow. Shot from the back row. Wow.
If we, uh, just quick, I'm trying to remember now, this is digging up my old warrant committee memories here, on the snow and ice budget.
So we have the operating budget for snow and ice.
Yeah.
And then we have, uh, we keep, we usually start the budget season with $100,000, it's a non-appropriated amount at town meeting to cover any overage.
Right.
From the snow and ice budget.
One of those we're not allowed to reduce, right?
The operating budget.
So I see, so this one that you're reducing is the other.
Yep. This is, this is additional funds that we carry, um, because if you, the snow and ice budget, um, I'm such a nerd, I have to tell everybody, the snow and ice budget, um, is the only one that you can't reduce year to year.
Right.
Um, you can declare a snow emergency and you can deficit spend, it's one of the only things you can deficit spend on. If you deficit spend that and don't have this non-appropriated snow and ice line item that we carry, you would hit your free cash for that when you do the tax recap.
Ah, okay.
Um, but we feel, we feel comfortable with what is currently available in Mo's budget that we can reduce that comfortably. Um, the other revisions we've made to the actual operating, uh, budget of the town is I am recommending, um, that we pull back on our conservation agent full time, I'm working with, uh, a surrounding town to do a regional agent, they're finding a, an inability to hire the, a person same as we are, so we're working together on that. Uh, a $17,500 reduction in the cemetery budget. And then we have a highway position that we need to fill, but we will hold off filling until January, uh, which should result in a $25,000 savings in that budget as well. So we're not eliminating the position, we're just delaying in our, in our hiring, so, um, the fixed cost reductions were $122,000 and the operating budget for the town was a reduction of $77,500.
Good.
Um, so hopefully we'll have a balanced budget and then we're moving on to articles.
Excellent. All right.
And then there is a draft of that posted on the website as well, if anybody would like to see that.
We're good.
That's it?
Nope.
All right. Uh, we still have that Bitcoin reserved, all right?
I always keep that somewhere.
All right. Uh, let's see, citizen comment. All the citizens are commented out here.
I do, we have no comment this evening.
Uh, consent agenda, two items. First, vote to approve the annual open day, opening day festivities for Medfield Youth Baseball and Softball, including a parade, and request to place signs advertising the event on Saturday, April 29th. I've already written those dates and times into my, my notebook, so that you won't have to do this by yourself.
All right.
Even if Pete forgets. Uh, and second, vote to approve the sandwich board request by the Medfield Energy Committee to place sandwich boards at the usual locations from April 24th to May 7th to advertise Medfield Climate Week.
All right. Do I read those again?
No, oh, yeah.
Do I have to? I'm just, so moved, okay, good.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Consent agenda is approved.
Yay.
Um, I'm not sure if, well, actually, we probably need all three of us here for the meeting minutes anyway.
Yeah, we can hold it till the next meeting.
And I'm totally unprepared, so those.
I got them all done, thinking that.
I know.
Dang.
That's why it's, it's at least the job of one of us at each one of these to not get them all done, so we can defer them.
Got all my edits in and everything.
Town administrator updates.
Uh, I just have, uh, one important update, and that is a reminder that the annual town election is on Monday, um, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the center at Medfield, One Ice House Road. I will be there all day, um, from, I'm in charge of picking up the breakfast, so I'm usually there from 7:00 to 8:00, um, but I'll be there for office hours if anybody who wants to vote and stop by, um, stop in. I will also have a special guest, um, and that is Melissa Bingham, who is our new veterans agent, and she'll be there from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning to meet anybody who would like to stop by as well.
I thought, I thought she was going to say like Barney the Dinosaur or something.
We need that.
I did mention I was a nerd, right? And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Uh, let's see, next meeting, well, I'm not sure why we did it this way, let's go to Selectmen Reports first, then I'll go up to next meeting.
Okay. Uh, I don't have too, too much. I did sit in the open space recreation planning meeting last night, I was intrigued to learn more about the survey. Um, I do want to make, take the opportunity right now to promote the survey, you can actually go right to the, the town of Medfield website, and, um, it's right there, there's a quick link, I know it's in the Medfield Insider. Are you going to do it again this week? Okay. Um, so I thought that was, it was, you know, I've sat in it, and I actually said this in the meeting when they were like, okay, Eileen, you're the only person, uh, outside of our group sitting here. I said, well, I remember when we voted on it as Selectmen, and there was a concern, like, we're spending this money, what are we going to do with it? What's, what's the net, you know, outcome? So listening to what they want to do, they had the consultant on, so, uh, and he's, he's trying to strive to meet, I think it's a June date, is that our deadline for this?
Yeah.
So it was, was very interesting. Um, and, I mean, George, is it George Lester? He's been busy going sector over sector over town and really, um, checking out all the open spaces, it's, it was good, it was interesting. Um, then I sat through the planning board meeting last night, listened to some of the comments regarding Trinity, uh, I certainly appreciated Abby's comment that you think about what's gone on in the world since we had our town meeting a year ago and where we are today, there's certainly some sensitivities there. Um, and then, can I just bring up one small pet peeve? And Mo's not here, so I actually kind of feel bad that he's not here.[1549.75] not here, so I actually kind of feel bad that he's not here. The trash pickup at the state hospital is just nasty right now. And I know we have this fine line of, it's not ours, it is ours, it's we don't pick up, we don't pick up that. But the trash cans, when you drive by on Hospital Road right now...
Because we don't, there aren't even our trash cans. We didn't put trash cans up there because we're not doing trash removal.
But there's coffee cups and whatever. So, it's our town property, and either we want people to litter, or we...
No, I want to be a national park. You take it in, you take it out, and that includes the dog poop.
So, you, well, okay, but we're not, and we don't treat it like that.
Right. We were told the people who installed the trash cans would take care of taking the trash. I just had a conversation with John Thompson about this probably three weeks ago. He said they had fallen behind, and they would take care of it. We can go up there and do it, but I would rather we not, we don't have, I just, I'm not filling my staff person till January. I don't have a trash person.
Well, I know. I just, it's, it's...
No, I know. It's very frustrating.
It's like, one minute, we're protective of it because it's town land, and the next minute, it's like, yeah, go ahead, you can trash it. I'm like, okay, where is it?
No, and I think that's why I had always pushed for not having the trash barrels, because I think people should bring out what they take in. I don't think they should be leaving it there for us to clean up.
I get that, but I also think that that's somewhat naive. So, the fact that, like, if people are going to be up there, at least give them a place to put their trash.
I disagree, but I'm more than happy. But if we're going to start doing trash on a weekly basis, that, you know, that's one more thing we're adding to DPAB's plate, which is fine. You know Mo's going to say yes.
Like, when you drive by right now, it just looks gross. So, I'm like, okay, this is a reflection on Medfield, and it's this prized piece of property. What was that?
It's very frustrating.
Just by, I was looking at it.
Oh, I know. It's very frustrating.
It sounds like we're probably going to give John Thompson the couple of weeks he wants to get the problem fixed, and then if we, if it persists, we'll deal with it.
It just looks nasty.
Yeah. I am pretty sure that the concept of what you bring in, you carry out, is not, like, going to take cold with the people who are talking about dog poop bags. So, for sure, that was good. But in fairness, I think we've been lucky, fortunate for a number of years that there are a group of volunteers headed up by John Thompson who have just sort of taken care of this. Yeah.
Oh, it's huge. But I look at it, and I think, you know, it's kind of funny that...
And there's, I think, something of a light, well, maybe not on the dog poop bags, but there's a light at the end of the tunnel about some of it when Trinity finishes what they're doing now. Once a project actually comes up, then I think that's actually going to have an impact on what people do and feel comfortable doing, just because of the way the whole thing is going to set up.
It's going to be all fenced off, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have anything official to report. I just got back from a week in British Columbia skiing and...
Well, that's why you're so tan.
One monster mountain that it was just a whole lot of fun. So...
Good for you.
You could tell. I was in such a good mood today coming back from that. It was, I was, it was a great trip. The weather was great. Conditions were great. Everything worked out right. The planes even flew on time. So, nothing official to report, other than I came back, got in on Monday morning on the red eye out of Denver, and I was on the planning board meeting last night, listening in and watching videos.
With a quick stop at the town hall.
With a quick stay. Yeah, a stop at the town hall in the afternoon. That's right. Okay. Next meetings. I don't think we're doing anything other than what we were originally planning. So, Monday is the annual town election, as Christine mentioned. Tuesday is the warrant hearing run by the warrant committee, and we...
That's 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah, 7:00 or 7:30.
I'm trying to figure it out.
It's 7:00 or 7:30. They're having a regular full meeting. They have some other business to do besides the warrant hearing.
But we would normally attend that.
Yep.
So, that's what's happening on Tuesday night, that you and I, keeps us off the streets. Our next meeting...
Which also would be beneficial if you could read the warrant articles before you get to the warrant hearing, because they may ask for your input on some of the ones that are sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Next official Board of Selectmen meeting, which may not be called the Board of Selectmen meeting anymore, is April 4th.
I have a lot of things to change on Monday.
Oh, wow. That's right.
And then following that, April 18th will be our second meeting of the month. May 1st, 2023, is the annual town meeting. May 9th is our first Select Board meeting, I anticipate, followed on May 23rd by the second one for the month of May.
Oh, that's right. So, it's still Selectmen until May 9th, and then it's a Select Board meeting?
No.
No, once the, once the election takes place.
If it takes place, okay.
Administratively, I think after Monday's election, assuming the article passes, we will then officially and legally be called Select Board, if, as long as the article passes. Who knows what could happen, but...
Encourage everybody to go out and vote.
Like, that's the big thing. We do have an election coming up on Monday.
It actually failed in Midway the first time around at the polls.
I am hoping, because there's a female on the board, and people, when they address me, they're like, do I call you Select Men, Select Women? So, I'm like, okay, if it votes selection day, we remove that dilemma.
It all depends who shows up to vote, because...
We will then from then forward be known as Selects.
We're going to struggle.
I'm looking forward to that particular title.
All right. So...
Let's see. Actions taken on bills and warrants for payment. I don't know. I wasn't here. Did Pete sign, Pete didn't sign the stuff last week?
No, so we actually needed, we would have needed both of you, and then we had staff that were out that week, so we have a couple.
So, we have, so we're going to sign, so there were no, so there were no actions taken on bills and warrants for payment last week, but we have double work to do this week. And then informational items, nothing to talk about there. Motion. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Meeting's over. Thank you again, Medfield TV.
Thank you, Mike.